Salem Urban Renewal Agency to order if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The recorder please call a roll.
Board Member Kaiser.
President.
Board Member Anderson.
Likewise.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member Leung, absent. Board Member Osik.
Here.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Cook.
Here.
Board Member Lewis, absent. Chair Bennett.
Here. I want to welcome our two guest commissioners for the Urban Renewal Agency as well as the City Council meeting. Jerry Satchin and Garrett.
Chris Willhalm.
Gary Willhalm.
Chris.
Chris Willhalm. I know a Gary Willhalm, that's my problem. Yeah. Very good, well, welcome. Additions or deletions?
None.
Okay. Public comment? None. Anyone want to address the Urban Renewal Agency? Alrighty, consent calendar?
I move approval of this consent calendar.
Second?
And the consent calendar consists of the August 12, 2019 draft Urban Renewal Agency minutes.
And the purchases? Is that on consent?
Nope. Special orders. Okay.
Alrighty, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Information reports.
Good evening, Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. Just two brief items. The first, it relates to a community forum that we had this last Wednesday on the proposed sidewalk behavior ordinance. So last Wednesday, we held a community forum. There will be a second community forum that will be this Friday at noon, Friday the 13th, at Laux. And we will also be conducting a third community forum. That date has not been set yet, but we will get that information out to the community soon as we have a date and a location.
Great.
And then, the second item is tied to the administrative purchases. There are four items listed there. One is for work out at the Mill Creek Corporate Center tied to some wetland improvements and open space improvements. And then, the other three are actually funded through our Gain Loss Reserve Fund for the Convention Center for Kitchen Expansion. So that work started this summer, and then it will finish next summer.
Great.
That's all.
Okay, any discussion on any of this? Alrighty, then we are adjourned. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for September 9th to order. The recorder please call a roll.
Counselor Kaiser.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
General.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Leung, absent. Counselor Osik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis, absent. Mayor Bennett.
Here. Okay, any additions or deletions?
No.
Okay. Any comments? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, this is what occurred at the Urban Renewal part of the meeting, but I have to say, I think a new forum is a very good decision. I was present there, as was Counsel Lewis, and as was the mayor, and through various developments, there were only about 20 minutes for the homeless people to speak out of about oh, an hour and 10 minutes or an hour and 15 minutes of the meeting, and we need to hear from them. So I think it's a great idea, and I hope it can be publicized many places, and I hope it can be a place where, someplace that the homeless people could come and feel comfortable in. And you and I have talked about some places, and I look forward to hearing what they have to say, because this is an important issue that we need to gather information from all aspects of what's going on downtown, both the people who live and work and own businesses and shop and have a, as do we, have a vital interest in a vital, vibrant downtown, but also the people who, for unfortunate circumstances, are also downtown. So I look forward to attending this third forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention that it was a pleasure to join you and Counsel Kaiser and also Counsel Cook later in the day down at the kickoff on Saturday for the Saturday Chariot Service. And we now have Saturday service and late evening service here in Salem, and it's been a long time coming, and it's free on Saturdays for the month of September. And I just wanted to, you know, I often hear people who don't ride the bus say, you know, I never see people on the bus, or this or that. Well, I have to tell you, I'm a, not a regular bus rider, but I ride the bus occasionally, and my bus route, Bus 5, on Saturday was standing room only. And there were people that weren't coming downtown just for the celebration, they were coming downtown because they wanted to come downtown. And I heard a couple of comments from people, they, when we drove past the Saturday Market, and one of the people on the bus was, he didn't know we had a Saturday Market, because he'd never been downtown on a Saturday before, because he'd never been able to, because we didn't have bus service, and he didn't have any other way to get down there.
Yeah.
And so I think it was such a testament on why it is so important that we have this service, and I couldn't be happier that we now have Saturday service, and in May, we'll have Sunday service as well, and I think that's just a great thing, so thank you.
Yeah, very good. That was a really excellent event, that, really exciting to see that back after all these years here in town. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Two reminders for council on the community. This Friday, the 13th, the city will be hosting a Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration and City Open House. Everyone is invited to participate in this celebration and learn what the city has been up to and how to connect with city services. Then on Monday, September 16th, the city will be celebrating its volunteers. Last fiscal year, 9,000 volunteers provided over 211,000 hours of time. All are invited to this evening of entertainment, light refreshments, and recognition of distinguished volunteer service. The event, the entertainment and light refreshments will begin at 5:00 PM, and the ceremony, award ceremony will start at 6:00. Guests may park in the Salem Public Library Parkade and enter through the main entrance of the library. Parking meters will not be enforced that evening. So again, 5 o'clock, September 16th, Monday, all are invited to attend.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a really good community celebration. I think we have a really great list of people we'll be honoring at that event, so I hope, I know the council will be attending. Alrighty, I have a couple of proclamations. It's an eventful, it's an eventful week. I'd like to invite up Beverly Davis, Chapter Regent for the Chemeckata Chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution, Day Westine, and Arlita Day. Yeah. To the regents, yeah. This will help explain the flag, Constitution, and other documents you've received on your desks, whereas the Constitution of the United States embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to the rule by law, whereas we celebrate 200, the 232nd anniversary of the signing of the United States Constitution on September 17th, 2019, and whereas we recognize the 64th anniversary of Constitution Week as issued by President Dwight D. Eisenhower on August 19th, 1955, and signed into public law 9/15 on August 2, 1956, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and to the patriotic celebrations commemorating the occasion, and whereas the City of Salem Chemeckata Chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution officially acknowledges this historic occasion as it has been an official chapter since November 15, 1915, and whereas recognizing the chapter's continued promotion of historic preservation, education, and patriotism, now therefore I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2019, Constitution Week, and encourage the community to reaffirm the ideals of the Constitution by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to all of us through this enduring document dated this 9th day of September, 2019. Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate this. We're glad to be part of Salem. We have about 73 members from the area, and we're involved with a lot of community service that we just kind of hide under a bushel. But we were really tickled to work with the world beat event in the park and be able to celebrate naturalization with a reception, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the copy of the Constitution. May we all keep it in our desks and refer to it regularly.
Good.
Thank you very much. I'm sure each of us remember where we were, if we were, on 9/11/2001. I was in Roslin, about a mile and a half from the Pentagon on that day, on that morning, looking out the window toward the Pentagon as events unfurled that, occurred that day, and I will never, ever forget that. We'll be presenting then a proclamation regarding 9/11 Day of Remembrance, and receiving the proclamation are, all of you are Chief Moore, Deputy Chief Gabe Benmusa, and and Engine One Crew, and our officers here this evening. Thank you very much. So here's a copy, Gabe, I'll give it to you, of the proclamation. Whereas September 11, 2001 marks a somber day in United States history, and whereas we remember the nearly 3,000 people who lost their lives on September 11, 2001, in New York City, Pennsylvania, and the Pentagon, and whereas the grief and devastation of this national tragedy was met with heroism, compassion, and union of the American people, and whereas we honor the valiance and fearlessness of hundreds of firefighters, police officers, and first responders, as well as ordinary people whose instinct was to run toward untold danger to help those in need, and whereas the sacrifices made by people on that horrific day remain etched in our minds forever, and whereas we remain a hopeful country inspired by the kindness and compassion of those who live here and our commitment to freedom and opportunity, now therefore I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim September 11, 2019, 9/11 Day of Remembrance, and encourage the community to reflect on the terrible events of September 11, 2001, and honor those whose lives were lost, as well as the heroism of our first responders. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Okay, time for public comment? No one signed up for public comment? Did anyone want to address the council? Alrighty. Consent calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second by Counselor Cook.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. With respect to 3.3A, I abstained on earlier decisions because I was not present for the meeting, nor did I read the minutes and the, look at the tape of the meeting, so therefore I will also be abstaining from item 3.3A.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Go through it.
Go ahead.
So we have item 3.1A, which is the draft City Council Work Session Minutes from August 19th, 2019. We have item 3.2A, property acquisition for the Rosemont Avenue Northwest Sidewalk Reconstruction Project. Item 3.3A is in order for the City Council to review the Planning Administrator's Decision Improving Tentative Subdivision Review with a Class 1 Adjustment Application Permit Number SUBADJ19-02 for a property located at 575 Salem Heights Avenue South. We have item 3.3B, an intergovernmental agreement with Polk County for Mobile Crisis Response Team Services. Item 3.3C, creating a Development Council to oversee and manage development of a continuum of care for the Mid Willamette Valley Region. We have item 3.3D, which recommends appointment to the Downtown Advisory Board. Item 4.0A is Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs' Consolidation Annual Performance and Evaluation. I'm sorry.
It's a public hearing.
That's not on the consent calendar.
Yeah, it really speed her up. I can see what you're up to here. Okay.
And that concludes.
Any discussion on any of the items? Then, all those in favor of the consent calendar say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay. I'll open the public hearing. Would you like to?
The City Council will now conduct a public hearing concerning the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs' Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Individuals testifying must provide their name and address or ward. Individuals are limited to three minutes of testimony.
Alrighty.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and council members. My name is Shelley Ahinger, and I'm the Urban Development Federal Programs Manager. Before you tonight is the 2018-2019 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or as we call it, the CAPER. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires the city to report on the performance of projects or programs that use CDBG or home investment partnership funds during the past fiscal year. Oh, it went to the end.
Whoa. Thank you.
The CAPER identifies Community Development Block Grant and Home Funded Projects or Programs intended to meet the needs of individuals and families earning 80% or less of the median family income in the cities of Salem and Kaiser. These needs are met by addressing economic development, homelessness, affordable housing, and revitalization of neighborhoods. This report tonight is the fourth year of the five-year plan. At the beginning of each fiscal year, the city prepares an annual action plan that informs HUD and citizens of our cities of the goals and objectives intended to meet CDBG and other funds for the upcoming year. At the end of the fiscal year, we report back to you what successes or challenges we had in addressing those areas. During 2018 and 19, I'm very pleased to say we were successful in meeting most of our goals and objectives. Over $3 million were expended in CDBG and home. That's not counting the $400,000 that the city used through its general fund, but for reporting purposes, those are called leverage dollars. This is just strictly the federal resources that we had to issue during 2018 and 19. As noted on the chart, $650,000 focused on the community's plan to address homelessness through case management, subsistence payments, and supporting the Warming Network Center. And I have some additional information on how those dollars were used in the presentation. As far as economic development, we had two entities that looked at job creation, small business development, and encouraged entrepreneurship as part of a comprehensive plan to address homelessness and housing. Approximately $2.5 million, or 75% of the funding, was directed to address affordable housing needs. Some of the projects included rehabilitation of Shelley's house, a transitional housing complex for women being released from incarceration. We were able to do a roof replacement, as well as ADA or American with Disabilities Act accommodations, a new laundry facility, and to modify a lavatory in the complex. In addition to that, approximately two point, part of that $2.5 million was to look at how we could help build additional affordable housing. You have a picture here of the demolition from the Center for Hope and Safety. We helped them purchase, the contractor, to go out and demolish that property, and they will be building affordable housing for persons who are victims of domestic violence and/or sex trafficking. And so when you see that investment from CDBG and home, it may take a little time for that housing to come up, but we know what's going to go there, and it will be a great addition once that happens. We also helped with St. Francis Shelter. It needed a new roof replacement, and helped acquire Redwood Crossing in development partnership with the Salem Housing Authority. In addition to that, we also helped persons who needed security deposits, both in Salem and in the city of Kaiser. Our goal, because this was the fourth year of the consolidated plan, number one, was still promote economic development, but if you recall, last fall, the council voted to revise our goals and housing and affordable, expanding affordable housing and homelessness were moved to one, but this was already in place prior to the council making that decision. And so, under economic development, we targeted 50 businesses to be assisted, and 42 were assisted during this period of time. Merit and Interface provided technical assistance to entrepreneurs as they look to start up new businesses or expand their current offering of goods and services. We also had 14 positions that were retained, and but for this effort, those positions would not have been able to continue, persons wouldn't be able to work at those businesses, but because we were able to shore them up, we now have 14 positions retained. What's also exciting is that our goal, number two, was ending homelessness, and we actually outpaced what we felt was going to be our target. We were able to assist 2,149 persons. Please keep in mind, these numbers do not include projects that didn't complete by June 30, 2019, but I want to make sure that you know that Archus led the way with their warming center network. The network provided shelter during the five months of November to March, 4,000 guests. They were how, they were sheltered in three churches when the temperature in Salem was at 32 degrees or below. Over 300 volunteers provided a warm, welcoming environment. The network was activated for 42 nights, and this was a magnanimous opportunity for the community to come together with the volunteers and with the churches and with everybody working together to make sure that individuals who did not have shelter would not be outside in those detrimental conditions. Our goal, number three, was to expand affordable housing. We targeted 221 households. We accomplished 156 during this 12-month period. However, we have over 350 units that are in some process of being completed. You can see that we work with lots of partners in new construction, preserving the existing housing stock, as well as using tenant-based rental assistance. Many of these units will be reported in our 2019-2020 accomplishments. This is just some of the organizations that we work with, because we do not do the work ourselves, however, we partnered with over 15 organizations this year. Those organizations have made a commitment to making the city of Salem one of the most welcoming, warm, and outreachin persons, outreachin communities to support low and moderate income individuals. Our next steps is that we will submit the CAPER to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for review and approval. We have to September 30, 2019, to make that happen. And with that, I thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from anyone? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Shelley, for that report and for the great work. My question is, what's the process when you submit it to HUD? Do they do anything, or does it just sit around there for a while and somebody rubber-stamps it?
HUD reviews it to make certain that we are at least trying to meet the goals and objectives that they provided for us, and then they combine all of the CAPERs from across the nation, and they submit a report to Congress.
Counselor Kaiser?
Thank you. I'm just curious, next year, when we're on year five of year five, what happens next? Do we get on another five-year plan, or how does that work?
Excellent question. We started in February of this year with hiring a consultant to assist us with the next five-year, five-year plan. It'll be 2020 through 2024. We've already started community outreach and having our meetings in the community. We'll be at Friday's event to make sure that the word is out. We have a survey that's online right now that people can take to tell us how they would like to see us spend the money and what they think the priorities should be. It will be public October 1 through October 30, and then from there, we'll start with our annual action plan process and bring it back to the council for review and comment.
Very good. Anyone else? I neglected, we have no one signed up. Did anyone want to speak to the council about this issue? Okay. Alrighty. Very good, thank you very much. I'll close the hearing, and Counselor Hoy?
I move approval of submission of the 2018-2019 program, your Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPER, for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second by Anderson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Go to our second.
The City Council will now conduct a public hearing regarding reconsideration of adopting Resolution Number 2019-26, the formation of the Aspen Grove Reimbursement District. Individuals testifying must provide their name and address or ward. Individuals are limited to three minutes of testimony.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Whoever signed up. Okay.
Thankful for qualified professionals there. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Glenn Davis. I'm the Chief Development Engineer in the Public Works Department, and we're here, of course, for the reconsideration of the Aspen Grove Reimbursement District. I'll start briefly with the history of the district. The application was submitted in July of 2014. After a lengthy delay in gathering the required information, there was a hearing before council two months ago. At the conclusion of the hearing, council denied the application, and then after the hearing, the applicant informed staff that he had not received notice that had been mailed to his home address prior to the hearing. The applicant requested that the hearing be reconsidered so he could appear to answer questions that had been asked by council, and the council voted to reconsider the hearing last month. And that's why we're here. And that's why we're here tonight. So now I'll share much of the same information that was presented during the last hearing as a reminder. Here on the screen is the vicinity map. Highlighted in blue is the site of the development. That's the subject of the reimbursement district. The site is on Wallace Road between Harret Drive and Linda Lane, and the Lindwood Elementary is there to the northeast. Here's the map zoomed in closer. On the screen, you can see that the future Marine Drive is shown there in orange, north to south, and east of that, there's a trunk sewer main. East of Marine Drive, the developer built the sewer main, shown in yellow, as a condition of approval to build the apartment complex called Aspen Grove. They're outlined in blue. So the sewer main has a potential of serving a number of properties in the area, and highlighted on the screen is that maximum possible area that could have benefited from the sewer. However, a number of properties were already connected to the main prior to the formation of the district, so removing those, those properties already connected and undevelopable properties, what's left over is the district boundary that's shown on the screen. And I will add that the district boundary includes all, the entire tax lots, which actually extends to the east of that map. So the developer submitted a total cost of $203,000, and the costs that were eligible, as determined by staff, is less than $88,000 eligible for reimbursement. And the city regulations and policies establish which costs are reimbursable. You'll see that there's a number of costs, particularly easement acquisition costs and attorney's fees, that were not eligible. So regarding cost allocation, we used a linear footage area calculation for a portion for those that had the sewer main on the property, and then a square footage calculation where that linear footage calculation did not, was not reasonable. So the staff report explains how those sewer main costs were apportioned to each property. On the screen shows the district fees assigned to each parcel. However, not all costs of the $88,000 are eligible because the developer actually benefited from the main he constructed. Therefore, the maximum reimbursement that will be returned to the developer, if approved, is less than $52,000, which is 59% of the eligible cost of the main. And lastly, I'll summarize a few key points from the last hearing. The first issue was the issue of timeliness of the application, that it took us over four years to receive all the information needed to complete the application. Next, there are questions about when the fee is paid. The fee is paid only to, for those who'd used the sewer main, and only at the time of connection. And also, there was a question about city versus county residence, and council policy requires that contiguous, contiguous properties need to annex prior to connecting to sewers, so they would be city customers. And then they're also concerned that the applicant was not present, which now we understand why now. And lastly, there was a question about documentation of cost, and I'll repeat, there's no question that the applicant paid for the construction of the sewer main. However, staff had to use discretion to determine that total amount eligible, as we've discussed before. So in closing, staff recommends approval of reimbursement district, and that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. We have a number of folks signed up. Is there a representative for the applicant on this?
Yes, sir.
Come on up.
My name is John Lewis, and I represent Creations Northwest. We're the developer. Hans Tigerson is the owner. And first, I'd like to just touch on who we are with the council. I know there were a lot of derogatory things said about us in the first meeting, and we weren't here to defend ourselves. So I'd like to just speak to the council, what it is, what we've done. We've been in the community now for over 10 years. Mr. Tigerson built Rosewood Apartments and owned and operated them. He still, we built Aspen Grove, the property we're talking about now, and we still own and operate that. We've just finished developing the Red Leaf property, which sat for 10 years and nobody wanted to touch it. We took that property over and developed it. It's now operating over off of Davis Road, Red Leaf and Davis Road. We also are now finishing up the Battle Creek Memory Center on Commercial, just south of Kubler. And we're currently in talks with the city, developing a piece on Center Point, Center Act, and another large apartment complex. So I just, I want to make it clear that we're not some developer that just flew in here and built the development and blew away. You know, we own and operate these properties, and Mr. Tigerson is a respected member of this community. Now, why the line was constructed, that you see here, it comes up and serves our property, and it continues across and services the properties to the north of us. And that was requested by the city because, at the time, there was a question about getting across that easement there, and we weren't having any cooperation with the landowner. And the city decided that they would take the property for the sewer under SRC 66. And unfortunately, the city failed to do diligence, and they didn't have a public hearing, which gave the landowner recourse against us, which delayed our property for a considerable amount of time, the development. And we had already had, we had already had approval. The city pulled approval back on us. Then the city gave us approval again, and then they delayed us and failed to issue us building permits. Then we came up with a reasonable solution, and we obtained permits, and then we made a lot of good faith efforts to get across the easement there, and we weren't, we weren't having success, so we redesigned it with a pump station, the pump up to Wallace Road, go around the right-of-way, and come down to the sewer line that we had constructed. And we were well into that when the city said they would have no problem, they were going to go ahead and, and use the state code to take the piece instead of SSCR 66, which I also noticed the city has written out of their code now, and I'm not sure why, but I think it was possibly because it was kind of in conflict with the state code on that. So anyhow, we constructed the line, and we're, we're in dispute of this map, as well as the amounts that are listed. First off, the piece of property at the very front of the road there, where the memory care is now, was constructed after we constructed the line, and they went down and they tapped into that manhole at the 90 right there. So they do have, they are using that line, and they were not connected prior because that line was never there. So the property that's been removed between 603 and 601, I'm going to assume it's 602, that was never connected to the line because the line wasn't there. So for the city to say that they can't be in the reimbursement district because they were connected, I don't see how they were. We built the line. The memory care wasn't there. They were constructed after our development, and they came down and connected into that manhole there, and they should have, take part in that reimbursement district. And the property between 402 and 403, we were required to put a stub to that property for future connection, and they can access that line and use it. And there is no sewer line on that property at this time, so I'm not sure why it was removed from the district. So basically, we have, we do appreciate the council reconsidering the reimbursement district. However, we are in disagreement with, one, the amounts, the amounts that were given by Glenn Davis. We have some disputes with some of the disallowed amounts. And then, again, we have some disputes with the map and who is partaking in the reimbursement district. The, the cost to get across the easement there, the city has said, we looked at the fair market value to get across that. And what is important here is that we look at the just compensation for crossing that easement. I mean, it's easy to say, oh, it was only worth $1,500 to cross that easement, and that's because the city had already purchased that easement, going down from Wallace Road to Mr. Clark's property. So basically, we were already crossing a city easement. So there was a no-build easement on that piece that we went under, and that's why the value of the property was assessed so low, is because there was already an existing easement to cross that piece. No, we're not, we understand what it was appraised at, but at the time that we obtained the easement, we had five buildings constructed, and they were sitting there with no occupants because we had no sewer connection. And so we have to look at just compensation for crossing that, not the fair market value of the piece of property. And what we would request, what we're requesting is, is that the city council allows us to open a dialogue with Public Works so that we can review these costs and come up with an amicable agreement between both of us as to what we feel are reasonable. The lawyer fees that were disallowed, a lot of them were involved in obtaining that easement and dealing with the mistakes that the city had made trying to obtain the land. And so we had to obtain a condemnation attorney and a local attorney to help us with this, to move through it, and those are expenses that we would request be reinstated into the reimbursement district as well. The line across the property, it doesn't benefit us. We haven't connected to it. We're connected to that very small piece that crosses the easement. The piece going all the way across our property, we have no need for, we have no future connections to, and it's only there to service the four properties to the north. And that's a substantial portion of the entire sewer line. So in closing, I'd just like to say, again, we appreciate the city council's decision to reconsider the reimbursement district, and we look forward to working with the city to come up with a reasonable amount and move forward with the reimbursement district. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes.
No, no, not yet, not yet. Go ahead, Counselor.
Sir.
I'm just a little confused, Mr. Lewis. You dispute the amounts and the reimbursement, and I presume you've spoken with Mr. Davis and the city engineering and public works department about your view of the amounts disputed?
No, I haven't. So...
Why not?
Well, because I wasn't working on the reimbursement district at that time. So I am not involved in that part of the company. However, I was the project manager on the Aspen Grove project when we did it, and the person who was working on the reimbursement district, our planning supervisor, he wasn't involved in that project. He came on a long time after that, so...
So whoever was doing this building, or the district there and the addition, the Aspen Grove, they had a dispute with the city, but they didn't do anything about it until you and the other planner came on board?
No. The, we, we applied for the reimbursement district, and we were told that the application was insufficient. So we started working on gathering the information requested, and at that time, Mr. Sanders took over on the reimbursement district and was working with Mr. Davis. I was brought in when we were told that the district wouldn't be allowed, and we needed some past history on the property that Mr. Sanders wasn't familiar with. Okay? So at that point, because I'm a project manager, basically, I don't have, do a lot of the planning stuff. I go from job site to job site. And at that point, I was running the job. And so I had the history, and I was aware of the history, but Mr. Sanders wasn't. And so when the questions came up, that, when we were disallowed that amount, and it was brought to my attention, that's when I reviewed the costs, and I went through them with him, and we showed, I showed him where we were having, you know, where these discrepancies were, and...
Excuse me, is him, Mr. Davis, or Mr. Sanders?
No, no, Mr. Sanders, yeah. I haven't spoken to Glenn Davis. Only Mr. Sanders has. And so, you know, I went through and, because I was the person that dealt with all of the subcontractors and helped Mr. Tigerson with the city during this time, I have the history. So I was aware of everything that transpired there.
Yeah, go ahead.
May I continue? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm a little uncertain as to what you want us to do, because the staff recommendation is approve what it is now, and you're telling us you don't want us to approve what was now because you have a dispute over the figures, so you want us to basically delay it some more while you and the Public Works Department gets together to see if you can figure out these figures?
Okay. We would like to form the reimbursement district, and we would like to work with the city, Public Works, to come up with a realistic, what we feel is a realistic figure. You can see, we, we applied for 200 and 3,000. Those were our costs, and it was, and basically, he's allowing 51,000 of it, or, you know, 25%.
Okay, I understand.
Let me, let me just share with you the concern, I think, that we're heading toward. You've had a month and a half since it's really been cleared, since this was denied, and then we're heading forward, and there has been no conversation with our Public Works to get this straightened out. I mean, this is kind of a mess. That's a technical term we use.
Well, at this point, it was denied. So it wasn't like we were, you know, working with Public Works. The council had denied it, and so we were more...
But you knew you had a public hearing coming up. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand that there's this time lag where this comes to us still unresolved, from your perspective.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure, as I listen to other members of the public who'll be speaking, it is resolved, and I want to, so you're coming to us with an unresolved issue.
We, you know, we've been in dispute of this...
Do you see our problem?
We've been in dispute of this all along, though. It isn't like we, we finally just said, okay, well, fine, go ahead and submit it for $51,000. We've been disputing the amount, and we've been trying to get the formation of the district. Okay? And we've been being told, no, you didn't have the right, the right application, and then we needed more information, and then they wanted to go and, and do a bunch of research on the, which is fine.
Yeah. Generally, in disputes, you dispute with somebody. I assume you disputed then with Mr. Davis, but you're telling us you haven't met with Mr. Davis.
I haven't. Mr. Sanders has.
Someone has?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. But, but again, you know, we're not in agreement.
Okay.
You know, I mean, so who do we go, where, what, what's our recourse at this point?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we, we...
It's a real dilemma. I hear what you're saying, Counselor Cook.
You know, we, we built the sewer line. We're simply asking for the city to form the reimbursement district, which is part of the city code, development code. And we're asking for a reasonable reimbursement for it. I don't think what we're asking is above and beyond. I mean, we, we've documented everything. You know, I, I think that some of the discrepancy here is, is that, you know, like I said, they disallowed the lawyer fees.
Yeah.
And a lot of the lawyer fees were, were created by this entire fiasco that, that came about with this acquisition and the city's failure to do diligence on the, the acquisition of the, of the easement and not having the public hearing.
Okay.
So we even asked about the public hearing when we applied, and there we were told, no, we don't need to have one. The city needs a, if the city needs the easement, it'll just take it. And under the Salem Code 66, you had to have a hearing, and you didn't. And so it created, you know, it, it gave the adjoining landowners recourse against us, and it delayed our progress.
We'll explore that with Mr. Davis, I think, before this is over this evening. Counselor Cook? Counselor Cook?
I just, you kind of spoke to this a bit, but are you aware, as part of the code for reimbursement districts, you're not allowed to reimburse for attorney fees? And it sounds like this is what you're disputing, part of the code, in fact?
That's just a small proportion of the attorney fees. I mean, there's more. You've allowed 25% and of 203,000, 51,000. And the attorney fees are only 40,000. That would mean 90,000. There's a lot more in there that's been disallowed than simply 41,000 in attorney fees.
Okay. Counselor Hoyt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the questions I wanted to know from last, the last time we had a hearing on this, but unfortunately, you weren't here to answer that. So, I'm hoping you can tonight. Why did it take you four years to get, to get a complete application in?
That's a good question. I mean, we were under the impression that we had done our diligence when we submitted the application and then it was denied and we were told that we couldn't form a district. And so, then.
I think your colleague there has something he wants to add.
Hans, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah. Yeah. Good evening, mayors and council members. My name is Hans Tigerson. My address is 14020 Southeast Johnson Road, Milwaukee, Oregon, 97267. I'm the applicant and I've been involved throughout this process. I'm the one who initially was involved in filing the application. And throughout the process, I mean, we, we were up against significant resistance and just hesitation from the city staff to accept this application. We went round and around with, originally, initially with Don Whitehurst and the conditions. And we submitted what we thought were, what would get approval. And sometime later, there was more conditions added. And then, this application got handed over to Lyle Mespet. And Lyle, and Lyle and I worked on this application for a while. And finally, it just kept, we kept trying to, you know, chase something that was elusive. And finally, I remember in 2000, early, well, late in 2017 or early 2018, having a conversation. And at that time, I had brought on Bob Sanders, who was Assistant Public Works Director, retired from the city of Hillsboro, worked with, career working at city jurisdictions. And I said, Lyle, you know, this guy has done hundreds of reimbursement districts. Lyle was saying, your application is denied, it's not complete. And I said, Lyle, no. And I basically, you know, I said, Lyle, if you don't work with him, I'm gonna go to the head of Public Works, Peter Fernandez. And, and it, we all throughout this process, for years, we have, this has been, we have incurred resistance. And I have a string of emails that we, Bob Sanders got involved in May of eight, of 18. And actually, I got it in my briefcase. But basically, it was 11 months until he found out that Lyle wasn't working at the city and his resistance. And so, we kept pushing and pushing. And throughout this whole process, it's been very clear that the city has not wanted to accept this application. And when we look at these fees, you can see the resistance to accept them. We have talked to our subs, excavation contractors. And this, this room, this reimbursement district, there's, it totals about $25 a lineal foot. To do this, talking to our excavators, it'd be over $100 lineal foot today. So, these fees are realistic. But in spite of that, we're being discredited for the fees. I mean, it wasn't our fault that we had to pay this take. And, you know, I was promised by the city attorney that the second time after the city had to pull back the first take, that, you know, they had ironclad suspenders. The city and their legal department represented us throughout this process of the take. And, you know, I still remember, and I'm trying to think of the attorney that retired, the head, and, you know, what?
Randall Tosh.
Randall Tosh, yeah. Sharp guy, good guy. And he's, you know, he said, you know, we got suspended suspenders. And then, once again, the city legal department messed up in the process. If they would have correctly taken this take through state statutes, it would have been end, or they had every right to take it. If they would have followed state statutes, it would have been a done deal. So, all these legal fees are a result of ineptness on the city staff. And so, now, we're sitting here just asking for a line that, most of it, we didn't, serves no purpose for us. And the biggest port of the, portion of the cost was something that held up our occupancy for months and wasn't something that benefited us directly, but the city. And, and it wasn't part of our conditions of approval for our subdivision, said nothing about phase two of this development. And then, that got stuck on us and our opening got delayed for months and we lost significant revenue. So, we're just asking for what's just and fair. So, and we feel like these fees are a fraction of the cost of what it would cost today. And we'd like to work with the city engineer on what's reasonable.
Thank you very much. Did you?
Excuse, excuse me, Ms. Mayor. I do have a question on a different angle of this. I asked.
With Hans or?
Well, whoever wants to answer, Mr. Lewis or, or Mr. Tigerson. My, my question is, I wasn't here at the, at the first meeting. But one of the issues that was flagged tonight, and I heard about this earlier, was timely notice. So, and I presume the notice might have been noticed sent to you and now you're saying you didn't get the notice? And what's the surrounding issues about that?
So, the notice, you know, I have about 500 units of apartments. I have multiple businesses in this town, multiple locations with building a senior housing property in town. The city, we're in contact with the city on a regular basis. The notice got sent to my house. I was out of town on business. I had basically three days before the hearing, three to four days before the hearing, that that letter probably, probably would have made it to my house. And I was out of town on business. And Bob Sanders here, and we have documentation proof, he emailed the day of the hearing, he emailed Glenn Davis saying, what's going on? And Glenn was, replied the next day, well, the, the hearing was heard. So, I was out of town and it was mailed to my house. Every business that I have is registered to my business address. We're in continual email contact, the city. I mean, we've had multiple construction projects over the last year in the city of Salem. They knew how to get ahold of us. And I think I have eight different businesses in this town registered to my business address. And they didn't email me. I mean, everybody in Public Works pretty much has our phone number in their phone. We never got a call. And it got emailed to my house. I don't get any mail to my house and, because everything goes to my business, both personal.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Cook?
Just out of curiosity, what was the contact information that you provided on your application?
Our office business address. So.
Thank you. Are we ready for public comment?
Yeah.
So, we're ready for a public comment then. Vincent Lanza?
Can I comment on that? Okay, my comment is for John. You guys were supposed to put in a sump pump below to collect all the water and send it to the sewer. Why has there been no pump there? Oh, my name's Vincent Lanza. I'm at 1934 Wallace Road. And I'm trying to figure out why they were supposed to put in a sump pump and never did. It now floods down at the bottom of my property and two trees are dead because it floods. I'm not happy with what they've done. Also, the sewer hookup that they put in for me is gonna cost me an extra $20,000 to put it in because it's gonna be higher than where it comes out of my house. So, I have to put in a sump pump and pump it up to it. So, where did he help me at all? He didn't help me any. Trying to figure out where he keeps coming off on these. He missed the deadline to begin with. And why you guys keep looking at it is beyond me.
I hear your question, yeah.
And I can respond to that if you'd like.
Thank you.
I, I have a question for Mr. Lanza.
Yeah?
Uh, Mr. Lanza?
Yes.
I can't, sorry.
This isn't, I wanna, I wanna make real clear. This is now the public's turn to make their comments and we'll give you a chance later to respond. Okay? I'm sorry, but we just don't want to have a debate going on.
No, that's fine. I, I agree with you 100%, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lanza, just if you could tell us which is your lot on there by number?
I am 601.
601, okay, okay. Thank you.
And at the lower end of my property, the north end of the property, between mine, my property here and Don's, is where the ditch was put, was originally put in. Now, it floods another six feet above that. And the water was supposed to go up to the sewer. They've never let it go to the sewer at all. They just let it run across his property.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Don Clark? After Mr. Clark is Mrs. Clark, I bet. Mary, are you gonna? Okay, we feel just following up. And then Kathy Duwanna?
City Council, Mayor, good evening. My name is Don Clark. I reside at 1990 Wallace Road, Northwest Salem, Oregon. And I'm here tonight to restate my objection to paying any reimbursement cost for the infrastructure improvements put on by Hans Tigerson. First of all, we have a manhole on our property. The line coming down where his property is.
You move close to the mic.
I'm, I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
I'm the thorn in inside, I guess. Where he went over, crossed the road there and then went down, that's where the easement was and that's where it was. All the trouble he has had with the city is, is, to me, is wrong. His trouble was with me because he came into my house and threatened me that if I didn't give him what he wanted, that he would get the city to condemn my property. Well, I said, well, your offer is unacceptable. And then, from then on, believe me, it was just a battle, left and right, attorney fees and cities. I've always had a good time with the city. Don Whitehurst helped me out quite a bit. Hans just gets pushy and he expects stuff. He's a contractor, I guess that's part of it. He has an easement across that property up below. But down below where he came back across my property, he put that in while I was out of state. I'm a retired contractor and I was out. And while I was out of the city, he came in and put that in. Well, I contacted my attorney and he said, you know, don't go into any more litigation. He said, just take it as a present. That manhole he put on that property, he did not have an easement. The city has a right to give him a permit to install it, but they do not have the right to give him an easement to put a structure on my piece of property and he did not have it. So, really, that manhole that's down there is mine. So, if I need to hook up for any type of sewer, I already have a manhole. I already have all the infrastructure that I need. I have electric, I have water. I'm, I don't want to be a part of his reimbursement district. Poor Vince sits on the backside of it. According to Don Whitehurst, he was required to put in a pump station because he raised the ground level and pushed the water over on my property and his property. He was supposed to put in a pump station. He never did. What he does is, he goes out and on my piece of property, he builds a trench.
Get close to that mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. He trenches across my property to get the water off of his property, back over onto the road and through a ditch. So, he just, you know, he takes advantage of every little section he can. He built a, a waste, he did, he disposed of the waste from a construction site on property right next to mine that had lead acid paint in it. I had to go to DEQ to get him to remove that waste. He was going to let that lead acid paint go down into the soil, into the water. I had a heck of a time. I came to the city council. The city council said, well, it wasn't on the agenda. So, I had to go to DEQ to get it resolved. So, right now.
Time's up.
Time's up? Okay.
Yeah, time's up.
Okay.
Is that light broken over there?
No.
Okay.
This time's up.
Okay. I saw it come up over here, so.
The red, the red light's not showing on.
I was just talking, I didn't see light.
No, that's.
I see it.
The red is broken.
We're dealing with faulty equipment here, Chamber. Mary, we'll give you a yell when your time's up, okay?
He's just in order. He's just in order, what can I say? Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Mary Clark and my husband and I live at 1990 Wallace Road on county property adjacent to Mr. Tigerson's Aspen Grove Apartments. I want to focus tonight on several reasons why the city council should once again deny approval for this reimbursement district. And we'll highlight controlling language from the Salem Revised Code why this proposal should not be approved because of public notice. Number one, failure to receive notice shall not affect public hearing proceedings. The background section of the staff report states, "The basis for," quote, "the basis for reconsideration was that the developer testified he failed to appear because he did not receive timely notice for the hearing on July 22nd," unquote. However, the city code regarding public hearings for reimbursement districts states in section 200.320C, quote, "Failure of the developer or any person owning property within the proposed district to receive notice shall not invalidate or otherwise affect the proceedings for the establishment of the reimbursement district," unquote. The city council voted down the reimbursement district on July 22nd and a claimed lack of notice cannot be used as a basis for holding yet another public hearing. Number two, the applicant is an individual developer, not a separate business. City staff noted that they sent notice to the developer at his home address, which the applicant did not dispute. The applicant applied as an individual, so there is no reason to send notice to any businesses that he owns. City code states in section 200.320C, quote, "The developer and all persons owning property within the proposed district shall be notified of the public hearing. There is no reference to businesses owned by the developer that are not listed in the application." Also, councilors, please note that we, the neighboring property owners, were not informed of the scheduled reconsideration at the August 12th council meeting. In summation, a public records request paid for our neighbor shows that the developer was legally notified at his verified address for the July, July 22nd meeting. It is alarming that city managers gave the developer notice on July 26, 2019, that the city staff, the city staff would ask for reconsider, reconsideration on August 12, 2019. So, the developer was given 19 days' notice before the August 12, 2019 council meeting and the neighbors were given no notice. We ask that you, again, do not allow the establishment of this reimbursement district that has the potential to cause considerable harm to us and our neighbors and only benefits Mr. Tigerson for his own personal project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Counselor Anderson?
Mrs. Clark, thank you very much. I'm, I'm hoping you could tell us which is your lot. Is that the gray area that is 202 between, or 602 between 601 and 603?
No, we're 501.
Oh, 501, okay.
We have the road coming down from Wallace.
Got it, got it. Okay, I see it now. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
My next is not a question, it's more of a comment. You know, why don't you want to go to law school, says the lawyer? You look pretty good at reading and getting those statutes.
You know, I've been a nurse. I've been a nurse at Salem Hospital and West Valley Hospital for 35 years, so that's what I did. I've got a daughter that could do it. Attorney's pretty good. Thank you, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Duwanna, followed by Richard Horner?
I'm Kathleen Duwanna. I'm a Realtor with Brookshire Hathaway. I live at 1045 Fisher Street Northeast in Salem. And I want to draw your attention to parcels 603 and 700. I sold those in January. So, when this first notice came out, it was supposed. So when this first notice came out, it was supposedly in 2014, and in your report you have a notice of the formation of this district. The owner at the time did not, submitted some testimony, he did not receive notice of that. Had a district been, if there are any liabilities against a property, they need to be recorded. Otherwise, we as Realtors are up a creek without a paddle in negotiating sale of a property. It gets, you know, this has been very interesting to attend this because it gets really, really of concern to me in the real estate business when we have disputes and a great deal of potential for high costs then being allocated to very few people who are not involved in it. So 603 and 700 changed hands, the new people have been given notice of this reimbursement district. I'm very concerned about, when I started to research this, then, looking just even at the reimbursement district law and how this is getting integrated with systems development charges. 603 and 700, as you can see, are not connected at all to the public facility out there. And if we add costs to those units of land, and they are not rich developers, it could become cost prohibitive for them to do any improvements to the land, one of which is a vacant lot. So I really think we have some issues remaining in the reimbursement district ordinance. There's no guidance in this ordinance about what criteria to use to, for properties that should or should not be included. I think you've heard one element, one such issue from the owner of 601, who's saying, "Look, you didn't develop the sewer system to the specs, and it's come in higher than my lot." So much work ahead to be done, both on the ordinance, how it integrates with systems development charges, and then, and then, who's going to pay the bill? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you, Kathy. Richard Horner? All righty. Colleen Lanza? And Scott Bassett, you'll do cleanup.
Colleen Lanza, I live at 1935 Wallace Road. My husband, 601, he's a little bit emotional. He's had a few strokes here as of late. This whole sewage system is not applicable for us. We're not in the city. It's too high for us. He made the comment about 602. 602 was paid for connection by the previous owner and the bank that owned the property previous, or owned the bank, the bank that owned it. That's why they're not in the district. So two entities paid for that hookup. That's why they're not paying for it now, or not going to be in that district now because they've already paid for a hookup. They are in the city. Just the whole thing with Hans is kind of ridiculous. He destroyed a lot of things with his work that he did there. He destroyed other people's septic systems with what he did when he did what he did. My husband had already had, started having these strokes when he pulled a fast one on my husband and had him sign paperwork, and then gave him a map afterwards of what he had signed for, you know? So he's a little shady when it comes to some of that stuff. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Scott Bassett?
Good Mayor and council members. My name is Scott Bassett. My wife, I live in, my wife and I live in Ward 4, and we own property. It's number 401 on the list that is near Aspen Grove. We've heard discussion about lengthy process, lengthy delays, and I have written testimony that's on your desk here, and I would like to highlight a couple of things out of it, two attachments that are there. The proposed reimbursement district should be denied again because it was not submitted as a complete application with 180-day code requirements, and would reimburse the developer for construction costs without clear documentation. Although the developer submitted the initial application July 9 of 2014, he did not provide a revised, more complete application until August of 2018. That is over four years or 1,500 days later than the 180-day deadline. This isn't even close. The August 22, 2018 amended application that is the first attachment to my handout here quotes the developer, "This is a more complete list than previously, the previous one I provided to you. Once we located a binder with project invoices, I was able to better account for total costs for the sanitary sewer extension." The city staff, when this went to them, the staff members who wrote the certificate of cost, in that public records request that was mentioned that the neighbors did, we got the July 26 email that's the second attachment, so it's on the very back one. And it's from the city construction engineer with 20 years of experience, who did the Aspen Grove cost review. He said, quote, "It seems to me they haven't come close to meeting the requirements of the application within the 180 days project acceptance." So although the developer submitted more detailed information four years late, it was still insufficient according to the certificate of cost dated June 18 of 2019. The report noted it was difficult to evaluate the revised application, quote, "In substantial part due to undocumented costs." It also noted that design engineering costs for the subject sewer can't be discerned with the documents provided, and that there was a lack of actual cost data. There's quotes in there. The city should follow the Code 20.350C, which states, "No reimbursement shall be allowed for any costs which cannot be clearly documented." Council has sole discretion over this, and the vote tonight will decide if it's been reasonable for the developer to wait four years beyond the 180-day deadline to find a binder with the projected invoices and still not provide sufficient information to complete a timely review.
Mr. Bassett, you got a red light now.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much, Scott. I have no one else signed up in the public. All right, the applicant has seven minutes to respond to anything you want to respond.
My name is Bob Sanders. I'm a registered professional engineer. I work for Hans Tigerson. As he's mentioned, I previously had experience in public works and most recently Assistant Public Works Director for the city of Hillsborough as of about two years ago. I've done numerous dozens of right-of-way acquisitions in my history with both the city of Hillsborough and with the Port of Portland. And to have a cost denied for the right-of-way acquisition for the easement to the Clarks for $42,000, based on the fact that staff has said that it is beyond or above market value, in any right-of-way acquisition that has a condemnation threat against it, which was more than a threat, it was actually a resolution passed by council, and the Clarks challenged that, and it was withdrawn. So with a contentious right-of-way acquisition from a property owner to expect fair market value of $200 and generously expanded to $1,500 for a cost that was $42,000 plus all the attorney fees, and in any right-of-way acquisition that has a condemnation threat, it's what's signed as just compensation, which is what it takes to settle with a property owner without going to court with all the attorney fees. We had a lot of attorney fees. In your section of your code that talks about right-of-way acquisition, it says the developer is supposed to pay for all of the cost of right-of-way acquisition, including attorney fees that may be awarded. When you have a settlement with a property owner, those are all part of the cost. So part of our contention with what staff has done is to kick out a major portion of the cost, the $42,000 for right-of-way acquisition and all the attorney fees to get it. The city backed away from it. You were contested that you didn't have appropriate notice and backed away, and we went ahead and came forward with it. That's one thing I want to comment on. The second thing is whether the line, north-south line, was included. Our condition of approval only included the east-west line up to our northeast corner of our property. That was the only condition in our land use approval. Staff asked us to build all the way up in the north-south line with a reimbursement district as a hook to have us go ahead and pay for that, even though we did not need to do that. So having that line discounted now at the end of it is pretty disconcerting. It is a major portion of the cost that was thrown out. The next thing I want to address is the comments about the lengthy timeframe. And I want to enter in to the record, an email stream, as Hans mentioned, I came on board to help him with this. And I started with a contact with Lyle Misbeck in July of 18, asking to get going. What did he need with that? We understood that there was a lot of concern about cost, and I also understood coming in that there was a strong bias by staff not to move ahead with this district, and to also that we were too late and we didn't get to the point of getting in time. We actually had done that, staff did not respond. I emailed back and forth and submitted those costs to Mr. Misbeck, and it went dark. I didn't hear back, for months I didn't hear back. And I finally contacted the Public Works Director and asked what was going on in May of 2019. I had not heard anything from Lyle since December of 2018. And I was told that he had left the city, and nobody had picked up the ball, and Peter had apologized for letting the ball drop so long, and that he would have Glenn Davis contact me in a few weeks. I was in contact with Mr. Davis off and on by email, asking what he needed. We traded some stuff back and forth. Again, it went dark. I did not hear anything back since I had an email from him May 15 of 2019, did not hear another word from him after that until he made a phone call and said they had some dispute over some of the cost. And I said, "Let's talk about it. Let's get together." The next thing I knew, I had sent in July 22, the day of the public hearing, I sent an email to Mr. Davis at 5:42, just about 15 minutes before you were meeting here. And I asked him, "Could you let me know what's going on? Where are we in the queue? What do you need?" I haven't heard back for a long time on that. And the next day, I called, and I was pretty heated because I had listened to your comments at council and how we were not here, and that was a problem with it. We had no notice of it. And he told me he didn't have to give me notice. It was sent to Hans' home address. And I said, "You see every one of my emails, and has our office address. Why didn't you call me? Why didn't you contact me? Why didn't you send me an email? Why didn't you give me a notice? And as far as Mrs. Clark said here, if we didn't receive the notice, it still stands? It also says in your rules that personal service. I would consider emails personal service. A phone call is personal service. Hey, it's coming up." I did not receive even a written comment about what the dispute was in the cost or the estimate of what was going to be presented to you. And I think that would be fair to have. So we have asked to have this continued because we really haven't gotten anywhere with staff. Now, you ask about why we didn't meet with them between now and then. We haven't had any information back that we could do that, or that there was any dispute with it. We were going to present again and ask for, which we've done, ask for us to get together. And there is an appeal process that generally happens when you're in disagreement with staff. Your rules don't really identify that, so we're here asking for that. So we would respect your concern or your request to get more information before you make a decision. You've heard from property owners that obviously have their own opinion. We have ours. We've worked with these people. Hans has worked with them, and we don't agree with some of the things that they've said. We would appreciate having a fair evaluation of the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes, Councilor Kaser has a question. Ms. Sanders, or you have?
Thank you. I do have just one question. I'm trying to make sense of the timeline because it's fairly convoluted. It seems that the application was initially submitted for the reimbursement district on July 9, 2014, and there wasn't additional, and that was an incomplete application apparently. And then there was on July 6, 2018, so nearly four years later, there was more information submitted, and in this email that we were just given as part of the record, says this submitted to complete the application. So what happened during that four-year period? This is what I'm most confused about within that 180-day requirement, that there was an application submitted on July 6, 2014, and then there was no follow-up. It was deemed incomplete by the city. There was no follow-up until nearly to the day, four years later. So I'm curious what was happening during that four-year period.
I believe we were requesting staff to help us and to work with it, and as I've mentioned, there wasn't a lot of willingness to help us get this going. There was a lot of confusion about whether we could continue on with our application. The incompleteness, we didn't know what that was. We were asked to provide information, which we did. Also, wanted to comment about some of the comments that were just presented about an email from staff. We'd never heard that before. There's comments about how it wasn't acceptable, and there were a lot of conditions and a lot of criticism about our application. We've never heard that. I mean, this is new information. Now, how does somebody that isn't involved, that's a resident along a property, how does he get information that we don't have as the applicant, asking for a district to be set up? And there's a lot of criticism about our application, but we've never heard that. I mean, this is all new information. We've never heard that.
Okay. Okay, okay. All right, Mr. Davis. Get out your flashlight and shine some light on this thing, would you? We can ask him questions. Go ahead, Councilor.
All right, I'll ask you the same question. So the initial application was submitted on July 9, 2014, and then it seems like there wasn't, what happened after that, I guess? What ensued during that four-year period?
I was not in every single piece of every single part of this project, of course. My recollection is that because of the 180-day provision, there was a long gap where there was no discussion. And so staff really assumed that this had expired. And then when this came back to staff, we met with the attorney's office to decide what the code really did require, and we discovered it was still valid. So we did not reach out to the developer like we normally would on a valid application, and that was the reason why we were dark. I really don't know, I can't speak for the applicant.
Wait, can I clarify? So the application initially came in July of 2014, and was it deemed incomplete?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a definition in our code of what a complete application is?
There are, it's a little different than land use, but yes, there are required elements of an application, and they did not have sufficient detail in their costs.
Okay, so the application came in July 2014, was deemed incomplete by the city. Okay, so the application came in July 2014, was deemed incomplete by the city. The city communicated that back to the applicant, that it was incomplete. And then you didn't hear back, it sounds like, and had assumed that the 180-day period had expired and that the applicant was not moving forward on this reimbursement district?
Yeah, that was-
Until four years later.
That's my recollection, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just a point of clarification as far as workload's concerned. When someone does leave a position, they get a new position, they retire, they leave. That workload, if it's active, still gets distributed among staff. And what happens to their email? Does it get a bounce back as far as this person's no longer with the city? What happens to their voicemail? Just as a, as just some further information, because it appears that that is something that was brought up.
Yes. Of course, in general, the projects that are known are, of course, transferred to new people, and that's normally a very smooth process. Emails are closed and are an automatic response to say, please contact some other person. That's a normal course of business. Except there are occasions where there's discussions between a staff person and an applicant that may have been between the two of them and may not have gotten transferred to other staff. That can happen. And so I really don't know all the details of how this one was delayed in that sense.
But if someone had left a position, and I kept emailing or phone calling that person, there would be a period of time where that person's phone would no longer have their voicemail, where that person's email would no longer be accepting mine?
Sure.
Where it would bounce back and say, you need to contact someone else. Is that correct?
Yes, you would.
Certainly within 180 days?
You would know that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Davis, can you shed some light on this whole issue of where the notice was sent? Was it sent to the home address? And if it was, why? That's my first question. Then I have one more.
So there's a term, the way-back machine, I think, is a term Mr. Chandler uses, I think. And so looking back at the history, our records showed that Hans Tigerson was the one who individually had, was the applicant with his home address. That's what our records showed. And so the regulation is you contact the applicant. And so that was how that was, that was, that's why that was done that way.
Thank you. There was a suggestion by one of the representatives of the applicant a little bit ago that this long yellow line there, the sewer line, was not one of the conditions, but it was a request. And I took it to mean a verbal request, but maybe that's not accurate. But there was a request of staff that they just built that. Is that accurate? Did we really ask them to do that? And do you have any documentation either way?
The standards require that you extend sewer service to the upstream parcels. And so this particular property was challenging to define what was upstream. So there was a lengthy discussion about what to do about the sewer system, whether the property is to the south, because the land slopes east. But those three properties, the 601, 603, and 700, don't have access to that trunk sewer to the east. There's something in the way. And so that was, we, after lengthy conversations, decided it was better to extend that public main through the property to serve those parcels. But it was, it was not a straightforward question.
So did we ask them to build it?
It was required by the standards to build it because we deemed it to be upstream. So yes.
Okay, so it was a condition, then?
It was a condition of the-
It wasn't a, it wasn't a request?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I want to go back to this incomplete application with the 180 days. The standard procedure, as I would guess, is you tell them it's incomplete, any applicant. It's incomplete for all of these reasons. And then it's, who then takes the next step? Is it the applicant or is it the city? I mean, you've done what you need to do. Said this is not complete because of these, and you have 180 days to complete it. Is that how it works?
For reimbursement districts, there's not a completeness process like there is for other ones. And so when we received the application, we send notice that we needed more information, and nothing comes. That was, and then time went on. Yeah, it was presumed it was expired. I mean, in land use, there's a-
Got it.
An actual date.
So, and what happened was when, four years later, they show up with their binders, at that point, you go to the city attorney and say, hey, didn't this expire at 180 days? And the city attorney says, no, there is no expiration date when you give them a notice of a reimbursement district being incomplete.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. There was just enough new information, I would feel. We owe the applicant an opportunity to respond to the new information, I think, that showed up. So I'll give you three minutes to-
Thank you.
Make your response.
First, I'd like to say that this code requirement is that the applicant applies within 180 days. And we did. So we fulfilled the requirement. There is no timeline on how long the formation of the district takes. So there's nothing in the code that says it has to happen within 180 days. In fact, I don't even believe we responded to within 180 days after we applied. And that's part of the reason why it took a long time and why we're looking at these type of, this type of time is because originally, we were told that it was disallowed and that we weren't complete and we didn't have all the right information in there. And so I made another attempt at filling, fulfilling all the application requirements, but obviously, I didn't succeed. And so, you know, we did make the application in time, and therefore, we would like the city to consider it. And I just wanted to quick rebuttal on a couple of the comments that were made. One is that this pump station-
This is for Mr. Davis. I'm only going to allow you to rebut, Mr. Davis.
Okay, that's fine. So, like I said, all we have is that, like, we applied within 180 days, and we worked with the city to come up with the amounts necessary for the formulation of the district.
Very good.
The, one thing, our project, it, the phase one, there's basically two phases, the east-west and kind of the north-south. But the north-south had a little, little bit of the east-west in it. The east-west portion was a condition of approval to our, our project approval. The rest was a condition that came along throughout the process. We didn't plan, and it was no benefit to us to run that line north and south and bring it to that lot 601. You know, it wasn't our design that ended up with it two and a half feet low. I apologize, Mr. Stanza, Alanza, for that. That was not, that was what the city required us to run it. The other thing is, is, you know, Mr. Davis, when we contacted him about application, he said it, looked it up in our business records. And in our business records and our registry with the state, it has my personal address and also our business address. So that was where he said it was gotten off our business address. I just don't understand why email communication wasn't made. I mean, we're, you know, modern technology, the city is sending emails on a regular basis. I don't know why an email wasn't sent. So.
All righty. I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor Hoyt?
I move that we do not adopt Resolution 2019-26, and we deny the approval of the formation of the Aspen Grove reimbursement district.
Second, by Ossick. You want to explain that?
I voted no last time, and I was hoping that we would potentially get information that might be compelling to change my mind on why I voted no last time. And I didn't hear anything that changed my mind tonight. I considered what they had to say. I heard a lot of blame. I heard a lot of things that really just didn't have anything to do with the issues, and I'm not compelled to change my mind.
Are you, I'm just going to ask you a question, just to kind of, I think it's important that we understand, this is, using reimbursement districts is a common way we work with developers to accomplish these kinds of infrastructure goals. Do you feel like denying this results in kind of going back on that sort of arrangement? Or do you feel like there's something special going on here?
I think that reimbursement districts are a valuable tool, and I think that it's one that we always want to defer to, to the developer. But in this case, I think that the residents have made a compelling argument that they're not benefiting from it, that it wasn't done in a timely manner. I mean, it's been four years. And I just don't see that this, in this situation, that that, keeping that promise or that, you know, the, keeping the, the nature of a reimbursement district, I don't think that applies here.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having been involved in the original process as well, I know there was issues with that north-south line addition and people actually talking about going across into kind of the circle on the other side of the street to maneuver their sewer across. But, I mean, what it comes down to is the developer has to request the reimbursement district. And what I heard tonight is they don't even agree on all the dollars. So why is this even in front of us right now? I would prefer not to deny or approve and send it back to staff to let these people figure out what they want to do if they're going to do it personally. So I have no clue as to how my vote's going to come down on this because they can't agree.
It's not ready, is it?
Nobody can agree on anything.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Anderson?
Well, I agree with much of what Counselor Hoyt said, but I would also say, I was not here on the July 22 meeting, but I would have voted to deny it. And I think that view is, it's supported tonight by the, the, the notice was given. And, and, you know, I understand as a lawyer what personal service means. And personal service does not mean a personal call or a personal email. Personal service is a term defined in law, and I will bet you that personal service means a mailing, US mail sent to the applicant's address. And if the applicant's address was the personal home address, that's where it should have been sent, and that's where it was sent.
Yeah, I got to tell you, I was very hopeful that what was going to happen tonight was this was going to be brought together and understanding there would be opposition. This has been a long, drawn-out process of discord. But I'm genuinely surprised by this map. I am confused by the dispute over that north-south portion and how that came into being and whether it's subject to this or not subject to it as a condition. It's, it just doesn't feel ready for prime time in this case. I'm really, I'm really disappointed. I really thought this was going to come to us with more resolution. And to have that big a difference of 200,000 versus 85, or whatever the number 51, or whatever the numbers are, I got kind of lost in the, in the dollars. It's just, I'm much where Nanki is on this. I can't, it just, it just doesn't seem ready. It didn't seem ready last time either. And that's when I think we turned it down. So why don't we vote on Counselor Hoyt's motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay. I'm going to open the next public hearing. Do I have one here? Yeah. Go ahead. Have you read the-
The city council will now conduct a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the planning administrator's decision in case number FRP ADJ SUB 19-01. The criteria applicable to this appeal are SRC 205.010D, 250.005D2, and 530.030E. Testimony must be directed toward the identified criteria or other criteria the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue shall preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on this issue. A similar failure to raise unconstitutional issues related to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Testimony will be as follows. The applicant, limited to 10 minutes. The appellant, if applicable, limited to 10 minutes. Applicable neighborhood association, limited to five minutes. Other interested parties, limited to three minutes.
Bryce, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bryce Bishop, and I'm here tonight to present the staff report for the appeal of the proposed refinement plan, Class II adjustment and subdivision affecting property located in the 42 to 400 blocks of Battle Creek Road Southeast and Pringle Road Southeast. As mentioned, this is a refinement plan for approximately 14.07 acres of the former Fairview Training Center site. And then there's with it a Class II adjustment to reduce the minimum acreage required for a refinement plan from 40 acres down to 14.07, which is the size of the subject property. And then along with that, a subdivision to divide the property into 16 lots with open space. So the planning commission took, this was originally heard by the planning commission who approved it, and the decision was issued on July 26. After that, an appeal was received by adjacent property owner, and the state mandated decision date is September 27. So in terms of the context of the Fairview mixed-use zone, it was a zone that was applied to the Fairview property, which is entirety of 275 acres back in 2003. And it sets out a two-step process for development of the land within that zone. First is approval of our Fairview plan, which is an overall kind of comprehensive plan for the site. And then there's more detailed refinement plans that come after that. So in terms of the Fairview plan, it was approved by the planning commission back in 2005, and it identifies 13 main principles in the master plan document itself that guide and really call for, you know, sustainable mixed-use, you know, development of the property where there's a mixture of housing and commercial and employment opportunities, you know, within this property so individuals can work, live, and play in this, this community. After the Fairview plan was approved, then it was up to, you know, the individual refinement plans to come forward. Now, a refinement plan could have been done for the entire site, or, you know, it could be broken down into 40-acre, you know, minimums. That's the base standard. So in terms of the refinement plans have been approved, there have been four to date. The first one was the Pringle Creek Community Refinement Plan in the northern portion of the property. The second one following that was the Limburg Green Refinement Plan in 2009. That was later amended in 2016 to expand the boundaries of the refinement plan all the way over to the west to accommodate a future, future residential development here, and then also to accommodate the inclusion of the city's Fairview Community Park. And we purchased that land to be included in the site. Then there was the Simpson Hills Refinement Plan in this area, and the Fairview Edition West Refinement Plan, which totally, you know, encompasses the proposed Fairview Woods Refinement Plan, which is identified here. It's kind of the key-shaped property in gray. So the property is at the corner. It's on the top of the hill at the Fairview site, on the highest area of the property. And it's at the corner of where Pringle Road, you know, curves and becomes Battle Creek Road. As can be seen by the bird's-eye view here, there are trees on the property. The Fairview plan identifies, you know, two groves of trees being present on the property. One is on the eastern half, and that's primarily composed or comprised of fir trees that are identified in the plan to be protected as community open space. And then there's the, in park area. And then there's the western portion of the property, and it is, consists of a mixture of oak and fir trees. And the plan identifies that area as an area to be preserved as ecological buffer and wildlife habitat and, and tree preservation. So the proposed refinement plan that was approved and is on appeal tonight, the vision is to provide 16 lots, you know, large lots, to accommodate single-family dwellings with the potential for accessory dwelling units. And then the proposed refinement plan also establishes some additional commercial uses that are typically, would be allowed in any residential zone, such as child daycare homes, Airbnbs, and other, you know, typical residential, commercial- daycare homes, Airbnbs, and other, you know, typical residential, commercial uses allowed in residential zones. And the whole idea of the refinement plan is to take the general concepts of the Fairview plan and then refine those down to specific development standards like a zoning code that then further governs the use and development of the property. So, the refinement plan standards that are included in the refinement plan are like the zone code that govern the setbacks, the lot size, and all the other requirements that come along when the property is further developed. And so, not only, you know, the proposed refinement plan calls for single-family dwellings and ADUs, it does preserve the site's natural features through the large lots and it has an interconnected system of streets as well as open space and trails that go through the property to connect it to the surrounding Fairview Edition West Refinement Plan and Subdivision. With the refinement plan, there is the concurrent subdivision that would create the 16 lots. There are two streets that go through the property. One is Brayden Woods Lane that will connect between Brayden Lane on the north and Brayden Lane on the south. That's been approved with the Fairview Edition West Subdivision and Refinement Plan. And it's also a long loop which transverses the property, you know, following the contours in order to minimize the amount of disruption to the property and it will also connect to the streets in the Fairview Edition West subdivision. The lot sizes again are large in order to preserve, you know, to preserve the, the trees and natural features of the site to minimize the need for grading. And they range from 13,500 upwards of, you know, 47,000 square feet. There is approximately 1.2 acres of open space provided in the development in the form of Oak Park and then smaller open space areas that, you know, for instance, this, the small Oak Park open space area here, it extends into the Fairview Edition West open space area. So, the developments are interrelated and work together. And, and there are also pedestrian paths that will follow along Pringle and Battle Creek Road and Brayden, Brayden Woods Lane and then trails that go through the, the site and connect the, the open space not only within this development with Fairview Edition West. And then there's a wood nerf design where you have a, a narrow street with, you know, 12 lots that would be on it. And it's designed to allow for, you know, the mixture of pedestrians and vehicles and it's kind of a similar development pattern that's envisioned here as you'd see in like, you know, Black Butte in central Oregon. Or Sun River, rather. So, in terms of the, the comments received leading up to the, to the initial Planning Commission public hearing, and at the hearing, we did receive testimony from the neighborhood association. They came and provided, you know, comments at the hearing. They recommended support for the proposal but wanted to make sure that there was provisions for the public to be able to go through the site, which the refinement plan does, and also wanted to see the, as many trees preserved as possible, which the refinement plan does include provisions that require, require greater tree preservation than what our tree ordinance, you know, you know, currently requires. And in, in general, public comments received, in summary, there were comments that thought the proposal wasn't keeping with the, the Fairview plan. Conversely, that there were individuals that thought that the proposed refinement plan wasn't in keeping with the concept of the Fairview plan. So, you have to kind of, the development philosophy and then, you know, positions on both sides about whether or not it meets the 18 and 10 of that or not. So, in terms of the issues raised in the appeal, I'll just kind of go through these quickly. The first one is the proposed refinement plan is inconsistent with the Fairview plan and there were kind of two main, main areas identified in the appellant's, you know, written statement. One was when you looked at the street network plan that was included in the Fairview plan, it was a drawing, and I have an excerpt of it here. And then, and it's all the different colored dash lines, those are the, the street layouts or alignments that were shown in the Fairview plan that, that overall kind of comprehensive plan, master plan document. And then you see in the gray shaded area here, you have the, the property itself. And so, there, there was a statement that was raised that, that the, the Fairview plan never anticipated any development to occur in this area. And, and when you actually overlay the property, which is shown in gray here with the, you know, the street plan from the Fairview plan, there was an anticipation of some development occurring in this area. Granted, it's pushed to the east, but you still have two streets and, and individual home sites. Again, we don't know what these exactly are, we're assuming they're homes, but again, the Fairview plan was not down to the level of exactly, you know, prescribing what will be developed. But there were 35 home sites, two streets and an alley, and so the proposal has 16 lots, you know, with the potential for ADUs and it kind of distributes to them throughout the whole site. So, and generally, you know, what you see in the area, it's, you know, it's very similar in terms of intensity. It's just, you know, well, maybe not intensity because if you push it all to the east, it's very intense on one side but not the other, this spreads it out more gradually across the whole site with a similar level of development. And then the other concern was that the, the Fairview plan had policies that called for this area to be preserved as open space and the trees to be preserved. And when you look at the refinement plan and the standards that it, that it includes, we feel that the proposed refinement plan is consistent with those values and the, and the principles included in the plan because it does include open space and trails to allow folks to, you know, use the property and to pass through it and, and link to other areas. The, the sizes are very large to allow the preservation of site features and to reduce the amount of disturbance that is needed to develop the property. There's a standard in the refinement plan that limits the maximum lot coverage to 35% so you can't come in here and put a huge, huge structures, you know, over the property and gobble up the land and, and remove those trees and the, and the resources that they provide and the benefit they provide to the community. Again, there's 1.2 acres of land dedicated as open space. There are standards in the refinement plan that require fencing to have openings in it to allow wildlife passage at certain intervals. There's also a standard in the refinement plan that limits the total area of enclosed yard space you can have on your property to 4,000 square feet. So, again, keeping an open aesthetic where there's trees and trails. And then finally, enhanced tree protection standards in the form of tree protection zones identified here, one between the property and the Fairview Edition West to the northwest and the one along Battle Creek and Pringle Road where 90, 90% of the trees within these areas have to be preserved. And then also, after the subdivision is done, there are requirements to preserve certain amounts of trees on an individual lot that stay with the property, you know, forever. So, you know, between the increased tree preservation requirements, the trails and the open space, we do feel that it meets the intent of, you know, providing, preserving habitat and wildlife buffer and providing open space in community area. There's also an issue raised with the proposed development not meeting the minimum 20 acres of natural open spaces required in the zone. That standard applies to the entire Fairview property, the entire 275-acre site. It's shown in pink on the left here are open areas that are in existing refinement plans. So, you have Pringle Creek Community that has open space along Pringle Creek. There are open space areas that provide buffers between, at its boundary with the Limburg Green Refinement Plan to the southeast. Fairview Edition West also includes open space areas. Limburg Green, it has, it has an open space area and so when you look at all the pink areas, when you add them up, there won't be a, a problem with the proposed development meeting the entire, the development of the entire site meeting the 20-acre standard. Sorry, I'm kind of losing my voice here. Issue number three that was raised was concern that the, an amendment was needed to the Fairview plan because the, there were significant changes that were proposed with this refinement plan and one thing that was identified was the densities were much lower than what the Fairview plan required. And I would just point out that the Fairview plan doesn't have densities, it just says that there's a maximum of 2,000 units that are allowed. And it's actually the, the zone that establishes densities, but it's only a clear and objective path that's provided in the code. And the applicant does have the ability to propose their own alternative standards, which they've done for density. Issue number four was the refinement plan is not compatible with adjoining land uses. As provided in the staff report, this is, this will be single-family dwellings. Area to the west of the property across Pringle and Battle Creek Road is single-family. The uses allowed are very consistent with that and the uses allowed in the refinement plan are consistent with what is allowed in the surrounding Fairview Edition West subdivision. So, you know, we do feel that the proposed refinement plan is compatible with adjoining land uses. And then the final, the final issue that was raised was the adjustment to reduce the minimum size of the refinement plan can't be approved because it didn't meet the criteria and that it was prohibited under the code. And so, as provided in the staff report, the, the adjustment is not prohibited, it doesn't change the applicability of the standard, it doesn't change the status of our use or activity, and it is eligible for adjustment. And because the proposed development, even though it's less in size than 40 acres, it's being developed by the same applicant and it will function together as a whole. And it's not the first refinement plan that was reduced in size to less than 40 acres. The Pringle Creek Community also had that reduction in size. So, with that, before I totally lose my voice, we would recommend council approve the, the refinement plan and the Class II Adjustment and the tentative subdivision. Sorry about the voice.
Great. Thank you, Bryce. Call on Alan Sorum as the representative of the applicant. You have 10 minutes. Ah, Mr. Olson.
Hi there. Eric Olson, Olson Design Development. I reside at 1520 Gwin Street in Monmouth, Oregon. Sorry to follow this up with a, follow up a rather complicated land use request with one that just came before. Sometimes they're, they're dicey and, and this one I'd say is dicey as well. We started this project about, not four years ago, but about two and a half years ago where we were approached by the landowners of the property, had this 14 acres. Initially, we bought 50 acres for Fairview Edition. We weren't interested in purchasing this piece of property for various reasons because it's a really, really, really complicated thing to try to figure out how to get it to work as a development. And so, we were approached by them, by the owners of the property that they wanted to sell it. We were in a bit of a conundrum. We owned, we were developing property on three sides and we were faced with kind of a decision whether just to sort of throw it up to the open market and have anything built, you know, sort of within the, within the sort of the confines of that property, you know, where we would basically be surrounding it, or try to come up with a reasonable solution to a very, very difficult engineering problem of how to, how to deal with something where we have a lot of trees, we have extremely tricky topography, we have requirements to maintain trees, and we have to sort of make it work in the marketplace. So, we sort of approached it this way. We initially said, we went to the people that we'd already sold houses to, people that we were building houses to. We had a, an open house at our house in Monmouth and said, what should we do? You know, we said, we don't want to have, we don't want to be, we don't want to be here where we are right now. We don't want to be, make this a big sort of fight thing. You know, we want to just basically figure out a good way to try to deal with it. Either they say, yeah, let's do it, or no, let's not do it. Generally, there was pretty much unanimous support that, yeah, let's proceed with it. And since then, all the houses that we've been building, since we're builders as well, we've sort of been very transparent about this. We don't know what's gonna happen, but this is what we're proposing and generally we've had, I would say, a pretty good consensus that this is a good move. Subsequently, we went to the Morningside neighborhood. We kind of dropped the ball when we actually did it, if you kind of look back at the record, but we ultimately met with them, explained to them the, sort of all the, the sort of the, the topographical challenges, the tree challenges, and generally they came out and supported our project. I think there was only one objection, was, there were eight, eight members of the committee and I think only one objection to the plan. Essentially, the way we sort of have dealt with the design, how am I doing on time? I sometimes lose sense of it here.
You got 10 minutes, you're three minutes in.
Three minutes, okay. Okay, so the, the, the basic sort of solution to the problem was sort of trying to figure out how to, initially we said, okay, let's just, let's put the streets in. The street, the city would require three connections based on the original plan of Fairview Edition. We would basically need the streets that we've shown as we've, as we've drawn. The problem is, doing a typical street standard would have created basically a 60-foot right of way. We would have been, it would have been very invasive, as Bryce pointed out, it would have been very invasive in terms of the topography, would have big retaining walls, bunch of earth moved and it would, would have basically been sort of counter to the idea behind the Fairview Edition, or behind the, the Fairview plan that you sort of respect the landscape. So, we came up with the idea of, and, and approached staff initially, said, staff, this is what we're thinking about doing. We, we want to do something that's gonna be a win-win situation. We want to preserve the trees, we want to come up with a way that we don't have to go in and just bulldoze the place and that we can end up leaving sort of an alternative, a diverse housing, a different kind of housing type that might not be available in the immediate area. So, we basically designed a, a narrow street, what's called a wood nerf in Scandinavia, the idea that you have pedestrians, automobiles, and bicycles share the space, low-traffic areas, so it's very safe. You see it in, as Bryce mentioned, in, in central Oregon. So, it is that sort of, that sort of was, was one way in which we sort of were able to deal with the, the, the very steep terrains and be able to sort of avoid making a sort of a typical subdivision where you kind of go level the whole site, bulldoze it, cut down a bunch of trees. We were able to sort of meander, I mean, the, the reason the, the road meanders where it does, both for grading purposes but also to avoid significant oaks. So, the, the tree preservation, we worked really hard to try to figure out, how are we gonna be, be able to make something that's gonna work in terms of the marketplace? So, the idea is sort of borrows from something in Europe, the, the borrowed, the, the freedom to roam in England and Great Britain. The idea that, you know, you have, basically you have pedestrian paths that sort of cut through the countryside. You don't own the property, but it is still open space that you can experience, you go through cross streams, go across, you know, streets that have been harvested, that kind of thing. So, that idea that you are able to sort of generate open space, even though it's still private property, but that was sort of the notion of what we're trying to do here to make it so that we can both create marketable lots but also make a, something that, that the, the neighborhood of Fairview Edition and also the greater community can use. So, in general, that's what we, what we're proposing. It's taken us two and a half years to get here. I think generally, we've had broad support from the community. Any sort of legal questions about the, about the appeal, I would defer to Mr. Sorum.
Any questions for Mr. Olson, Councilor Anderson?
Thank you very much for coming down, Mr. Olson. I've got a question about the fencing and how that relates to actually the open spaces and open places. It sounds like each home will be allowed to build a fence around sort of like their immediate property and the rest of their property will not be fenced in?
There, a green fencing is allowed, which is sort of open, open fencing, but then there are sort of turnstiles, if you will, places where wildlife can pass through at, at increments along that.
Would you include human beings as wildlife?
I, I would not necessarily know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, it sounds like, say that somebody has a dog and they want to keep their dog in the fenced area on that property, that fenced area is going to be something less than the wider boundaries of their property.
That's correct. The, the, the actual dog run area, if you will, well, we intentionally defined it in a much more sort of restrictive way.
Okay. Then the tree, the two-tree kind of preservation areas, one along the, the southwest side and one up in the north, northern part. Those areas are not gonna be fenced either?
The same criteria applies to those.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
It's just, the, the only restriction in those areas is the, the preserve, the quantity, the percentage of trees preserved.
There'll be no building and 90% of the trees that are there now have to be there.
That's right.
Then, the same thing about the trees on the individual lots, 'cause I think Bryce said they were going to be protected somehow. Is that gonna be by some sort of restrictive covenants or the place you can, the actual footprint of the house itself, it can, it can't take, take down a bunch of trees to put the footprint there? I mean, how are you gonna protect the trees on the individual lots?
It's, it's based on a, on a percentage and, and I don't know exactly what the, this would be, I guess, a question for Mr. Sorum in terms of the, the legalities of how do we, how do we in the future avoid somebody going in and, and cutting a bunch of trees? But the, the idea is, I believe it's a deeded restriction on the property that would prevent somebody from going in and sort of just leveling a site.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. No, I think you've got a few more minutes.
Real quick, Alan Sorum, for the record, attorney for the applicant's office, is 250 Church Street, South Salem, Oregon, zip code 97302. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you, honorable mayor and councilors, to answer Mr. Anderson's question. A couple of conditions, a couple mechanisms to ensure compatibility after the city's process is done, which is that final plat review, would be, one of the conditions of approval requires actual CCNRs to be reviewed and approved by, by the city. The second thing that happens is that the city's... The second thing that happens is that the city's decision and conditions of approval are generally recorded. So, future homeowners will likely have two documents that they would get when they go to the title company or they work with their broker, that they'll need to review. It'll be their own CCNRs, and it'll be the conditions of approval.
Thank you very much. I, I guess when you say the, the conditions, the CCNRs will have to be submitted to the city for its approval, is that like a veto right? Or if we say, the city says, the staff says we don't like it, you come back with something else, or does it get appealed up to the council, or how does that happen?
It is not a land use decision. It happens as far as compliance with the conditions of approval. So, as part of the final plat process, if, if there ever were to be a dispute, I, I don't have the instant recall of what the language and the conditions of approval say, but it's essentially subject to the reasonable review and approval of the city attorney's office.
And of course, we would be reasonable.
Historically, I have been, yes.
Yeah, no, so my last question is, it sounds like if those were violated, that's something that, I don't know if you'll have a homeowners' association or something, that's something that civil action could potentially be taken.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very, oh, sorry, Councilor Nicky.
Thanks, just a quick one. And I probably should have asked Mr. Olson, in regard to, one of the neighborhood comments was that they'd like to see final development plans. Do you plan on actually speaking with them again?
Yeah, I mean, that'd be, I mean, in part of the, I'll defer to the client, but as, as far as the refinement plan and those comments, I mean, this is the subdivision in refinement plan applications, but as Mr. Bishop noted, the refinement plans act as a more permanent document. So, if someone were to ever to try to come in with a new land use decision, albeit a zone change or another land use decision, that refinement plan is going to still be in place, because that is essentially a localized zoning code, notwithstanding a new owner. So, that's my little technical pieces to the practical.
And yeah, it's somewhat different. I know that the Neighborhood Association really appreciates people coming and speaking to them prior to final things hitting the city, so that they have an opportunity to provide input.
I, that's been-
And they've been very supportive of most of the areas in there.
Yeah, and that, I mean, that's been consistent with the past practice of the Fairview Edition and continued on through that, that outreach and through this project, so I assume that will continue on. Good, thanks.
Very good. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to ask a general question, Mr. Olson. I know you have other properties that are already developed. Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you got to put your face in.
Okay, okay. I just, I just wondered, maybe the council-
No, you have to look at it.
Can answer this also, about, there seems to be a lack of response in development from the school district.
Look at it.
About, to the school district, don't respond to some of, I've been on the council for Salem Gateway Neighborhood Association, and I have yet, in any development, to see anything from the council or from the school district about what they're doing about schools, all right? This isn't a big project, but it adds. The school district there, Leslie's already crowded, and other schools. So, I would, I would like to see something done to get a hold of the, working more with the developments with the school district. What are you doing? I understand there's no developments for any new schools outside.
So, I could, I could speak to just part of the process a little bit. In the record, you'll find as Attachment A to the staff report is, is a letter from the school district. So, this is pretty customary, where the applicant is part of receiving and soliciting comments from other public institutions that may be affected, goes out to the district and asks, "Is there going to be an impact?" And, and they submitted a, a letter indicating that things were adequate, and so that is, again, Attachment I in the letter. So, that is part of the city's process, and we do have correspondence from the district speaking to those requirements in the record.
I would like to see a little better, how do we get more response from, from the school district to these issues? Because that affects the whole issues of development, you know? I guess I got to go down there and see, see the superintendent, see what's, why we're not getting information, just to consult.
Okay, thank you. You, again, you, you want to look at the attachment from the school district saying no impact. Okay. Mr. Malone?
I have some written testimony here for the commissioners. I'm afraid, Mr. Mayor, I'm short one, so I also have one for staff.
I'll pass, and it needs to go to the recorder primarily.
Great. So, here, those are for the commissioners, and I got one for staff here, and I also have a thumb drive here with exhibits. So, the thumb drive doesn't need to go in, but it's just about the exhibits to go, to be entered into the record. So, that entails essentially the master plan, its exhibits, and the attachment to the master plan, as well as my testimony.
Mr. Malone, you're the attorney for the appellant.
That is correct.
Yes.
Sean Malone, on behalf of Jerry Memper, the appellant, and address is 259 East Fifth Avenue, Eugene, Oregon 97401. I think staff sort of adequately addressed all the issues, including the appeal statement, as this is a de novo appeal. There's one additional issue, and maybe some additional ones in the written testimony that I'd like to address initially. The first one is, there's a condition of approval five for the refinement plan approval. That provides that an archaeological, archaeological resource inadvertent discovery plan shall be required for development within the refinement plan area. Now, to the extent that is a discretionary document, includes discretionary decision-making, that cannot be deferred to a later time in which the public can't comment on that. That plan either must be set forward now, so that we can comment on it, or the condition of approval must be amended in order to provide a public process when that plan is actually set forward. So, that's just, first off, additional argument that is not in the written materials or in the appeal statement, but again, this is a de novo hearing, so we can bring that forward. Really, the biggest issue that we're looking at here is consistency of this refinement plan, the proposed refinement plan, with the, what's called the Fairview Plan or the master plan. Now, before I go into this, I welcome any questions at any time, happy to answer any. So, we're looking at this consistency issue. As staff noted, there are large, two large groves on this subject area, subject to the refinement plan, the proposed refinement plan. They include oak, fir, mature firs. These are essentially some of the, if you look in the master plan, you'll notice that these are some of the first, some of the only areas that were untouched when this place was initially set forth in the master plan. And pursuant to that, most likely, the master plan noted that these areas should be protected, improved, preserved, expanded, and act as an ecological buffer. Now, I don't know who has control of the, the overhead there, but if whoever does can go back to the sort of master plan one, that would be great. There we go. So, on the right side there, you'll see this area in the sort of western portion there, identified as the woods. So, this is the master plan map. This is what the refinement plan has to be consistent with. As we can see here, this area is largely wooded. It doesn't, the master plan doesn't provide for any sort of development in this particular area. And so, when we have these requirements in the master plan that provide for protection of these areas, that they be set aside, that they be improved, preserved, expanded, and again, it acts as an ecological buffer, we're really begging the question of, how is it that this master plan becomes consistent with the refinement plan that puts not just roads, but also 16 houses with fenced-in yards and so forth in there? So, that's one of the first issues related to consistency with the master plan. The second issue arising under this is related to the streets that are involved. They're not on this particular one, but in earlier ones, you probably saw the two streets that were included. Now, as I must, I'll concede that the sort of western portion of this area in the refinement plan, when it was overlaid by staff, did show small portions of some streets. That's dramatically different than what is being proposed here. Essentially, 2/3 of the area isn't identified as having any streets, and not just the master plan map, but also the mobility plan, the street network plan, and the conceptual street plan. So, that's four provisions of the master plan that this appears to be inconsistent with. And there are other provisions that sort of implicate this general requirement that it's inconsistent. We're changing buffers, we're affecting these significant natural resource areas, we're adding additional streets, and we're changing densities by more than 20%. The, this area has a proposed zone of light intensity and medium intensity, and the density that is now proposed for this area changes more than 20%. Doesn't, the code does not say it has to be 20% less or 20% greater, it's just a change in 20%. Each of those things, each of those provisions implicate a necessary amendment to the master plan. So, this is the remedy that really the city council should be looking at, and it's really the process that the applicant should have pursued initially. That is, to amend the master plan to allow this proposal to be consistent, therefore, with the master plan. This process has sort of been short-circuited by not amending the master plan, creating consistence, inconsistencies. And so, if, if, if the challenge to this particular proposal were to go away, that would probably occur as a result of amending the master plan in the first place. And, let's see here. So, those are two big issues, the sort of ecological buffer area, the street network, those are all sort of inconsistent, and, you know, it's clearly sort of set forth in the woods area over there, it's a complete buffer for some of these areas, and it's surprising to me to see that this, this area is now subject to proposed refinement plan. I'm more than happy to take any questions on inconsistency with the master plan, as it's, it's one of the larger issues here. But in the absence of that, I'll move on. This notion of a minimum of 20 acres of natural open space, which happens to be the slide that we're on, conveniently, so that's natural open space. The staff has sort of taken a position that trails that are going on inside this development can act as some of that open space. Well, that, that's, that's sort of on private property there, and I'm not sure how we reconcile natural open space with a trail that's on private property. They would have the opportunity to exclude someone from that, that trail, as it were. So, I don't see any necessary easements for public use or anything like that. Moreover, I concede that the 20-acre natural open space provision is, applies to the entire area. But what we have here is just sort of some blobs on the screen with no actual figures. How do we know that we're approaching that 20 acres of natural space? I would think there would have to be some sort of conditions of approval that would require X amount of acres be devoted to natural open space in these areas to the south that have not yet been developed. And then, we'd also have to look at this very important word up there, natural open space. What does that define to mean? Natural is not defined in your code, but, you know, things such as trails and so forth, those may not, those may not fall within this natural open space area. So, again, there, there's problems there. You know, we have the proposed 1.2 acres on this as alleged natural open space, but apparently, that includes the trails, so it, it's not entirely clear that that's what, 1.2 acres is what's being proposed. And to the extent, again, that we're deferring some undeveloped areas to the south as satisfying that natural open space, that's yet to be determined. Perhaps that could be satisfied by some sort of condition of approval that would be put upon those subsequent developments to the south. It's not enough to just simply say that we'll get it in the future somehow. At this point, we have no acreage figures to demonstrate that that figure is even feasible. The fourth issue that I'll touch upon is this, this notion of the adjustment. So, there's a specific requirement here that these refinement plans be subject to a 40-acre parcel, or a 40-acre minimum parcel in order to develop. This one obviously is 14.07 acres, rather significantly below that standard, and the staff has come back with several sort of rebuttals against the argument here. I think the, the first one that I've heard is that Fairview Edition West, if that's what's referred to on the, on the sort of western area that's almost encompassing this area, that it's sort of isolated it. Well, I don't see anything in the master plan that says everything that you're doing has to be contiguous with one another. And so, there's, there's nothing to say that some of these southern portions couldn't be combined with that portion for a 40-acre parcel, so you can avoid it that way. The more pressing provision is that the, you can't have an adjustment that sort of frustrates the purpose of these areas. And the reason for, the purpose for the 40-acre requirement is that we wanted to, or the city wanted to avoid a piecemeal approach to developing these things. And that's exactly what's occurring here. Another remedy that could, is possible, as was done with one of the ones to the northeast, as was stated by staff, to have an amendment to a refinement plan. They could amend the refinement plan of the, the Fairview Edition West to include this, just as it was done in the other way.
Mr. Malone, you got a red light now.
Thank you. So, these are all the processes that should be followed, that could be followed, in order to make this consistent with the master plan and satisfy all the approval criteria.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Malone. It sounds like what you're saying is that some of the other refinement plans, before they were adopted, the master plan itself had to be amended?
I'm not sure that's exactly what I'm saying. I'm saying, in order to make this proposal consistent with the master plan, the most logical, most reasonable path forward would be to amend that master plan. So, it's really just more process, essentially.
Then, if, as I'm looking at that up there, as I understand it, the one on the right is, is the master plan, okay?
That's correct.
And the one on the left is what's happened on the ground so far?
I can't speak to the one on the left. I think that's a reasonable assumption.
Yeah, because I'm looking at that, and, you know, it's pretty tied in, but it sure looks to me like what has happened on the ground so far is not 100% consistent with the master plan as shown on the, the master plan. So, I don't know, and maybe staff can answer this, if there was an amendment to the master plan to, to produce something different on the ground than what the master plan says. And you can ask that, answer that later, Bryce.
I think it goes to the issue of, you know, the standard we're looking at, one of the big standards we're looking at here is consistency and not just specificity. So, they're not the same thing. So, in an area that doesn't have any streets, if you propose streets, and the rationale in doing that is to say, "Well, we're making it more specific." Well, that's not the question. We're asking for consistency. And, yeah, sorry.
Thanks.
Okay, very good. Councilor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Malone. I'm curious, I, you've made an argument here, you've gone line by line on, on reasons that we should grant the appeal, but I'm curious, what is the appellant's goal? What's, what's the desired outcome here? I mean, if, if the appellant were to get what they wanted out of this situation, what would that be?
Well, I think the question is really, what was the city council's goal in passing this master plan, in identifying the woods as an area that should be set aside, that should be preserved? And so, it's really not my client's goal in getting something personal out of this whatsoever. It's in upholding the master plan, a document that this city council passed. And what we're telling you is that there is a path forward, and that is to amend that master plan first.
So, it's strictly about the process?
It's not just about process, but, you know, it's about, at one point, it's about the master plan itself, the integrity of this document that this council passed, and in one time stating, "We should preserve this area," or, you know, for whatever reason, but that's what was done. And so, you can change course with the master plan, but you got to amend the master plan. If you change course with the, in pursuing the refinement plan, then you're creating something that's inconsistent with the master plan. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alan Meyer?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Alan Meyer. I live at 1476 Strong Road Southeast with my wife, Muriel, and we are both board members on the Morningside Neighborhood Association. We're also residents of Fairview Edition West, and we're also- We're also residents of Fairview Addition West, and we're also located immediately across the alley from the land that's being discussed here. So we have a direct interest as well as a broader interest. Because I am a board member of the Neighborhood Association, I wanted to represent our neighbors. So instead of going in and voting based on what I believe is correct, I did a poll of the residents in Fairview Addition West. I got 15 responses, and of those 15 responses, 11 favored it, 2 were neutral, and 2 opposed it. So pretty much support, as Eric had mentioned earlier, for this. We've also, I've been on the Neighborhood Association Board for over 25 years, and we vigorously defended the Fairview Plan to the extent we could in the light of economic reality, and we tried to make sure that developments were consistent with the spirit of the plan. And the folks at Simpson Hills can tell you that we fought long and hard to try to get that development more consistent than it was when originally presented. The original concept was this was all going to be developed as a piece, and this woods was one of the pieces. Well, now, there are plans for, I think, everything except this woods, and now it's stranded. And it's either going to stay as privately owned, undeveloped land, where people have occasionally chosen to camp out, and in one case, steal my cushions to make their camp a little more comfortable, or it can be developed in a responsible manner that's consistent with the sustainable Fairview Plan. As was mentioned earlier by Counselor Anderson, I don't think there's anything with the possible exception of Pringle Creek community that's truly consistent with the plan. Everything after that has been in the spirit, but not to the letter. So the Neighborhood Association, as they say, is supporting this plan, I guess, or amendment to the plan for the woods.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Olson, Mr. Soro, you have five minutes. Oh, questions to staff, so you get a chance to, just a sec, just a sec. Sorry. Bryce? Ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay. Counselor Casey.
Thank you. I had two questions. One's easy.
Okay.
The woods, is that private property or public property?
It is private property.
Okay. So people using that currently as recreation are on private property, trespassing on private property. Okay. My second question is, the master plan, I know several buildings that were the former Fairview Training Site are gone now. Those appear in that diagram there on the right in the master plan as the crescent.
Yeah.
Those are totally gone. Obviously, we're not going to rebuild those, it's not going to look like that, it's not going to be in the same spot. So how much, I guess, how much weight does the master plan really have as far as what's put down there with specific built environment features versus natural features? And how much does that actually have to align with reality?
Well, the Fairview Plan, all the diagrams, the maps that are referenced, they're illustrative. You know, when the Fairview Plan was done, there were high-level planning studies, there wasn't detailed engineering to look at the grades of every street to make sure it all will function properly. And so it was a planning concept to show how a property can be developed, to integrate open space and trails, and accommodate a variety of housing types, and commercial unemployment uses down on the lower areas of the site. So it was not to the point where, oh yes, we know that all of this is going to work, and you know, you just build it, and that's what the refinement plan is for, to do a detailed study in smaller chunks, to actually lay out how the development will work and the standards of what kind of development. So we look at it as guiding, but not, it's not, you know, strict, it's got, it has to look like that.
So that diagram on the right is purely illustrative.
Yes.
It's just showing, it could look like this.
Yeah.
It could have the woods, it could have water tower park, or whatever those things are. It's just one of a possibility that would meet the master plan goals.
Yeah. And I would point out the Limburg Green Amendment, you know, where the new park is, you know, the original member, you know, Sam Hall, one of the, you know, he was, that was his amendment. And you look at the one on the left, and you look on the one on the right, and there's discrepancies. And he was part of the original architect of the zone, involved with myself and, you know, and other staff putting this together, it was illustrative, it wasn't meant to be, you know, exactly looking like that, but you still had, the development still has to meet the concepts of those principles that are identified in the plan, those 13 principles.
Thank you.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bishop, Mr. Malone raised an issue that I actually had developed when I read through the packet as well, and that's regarding the 20 acres of open space. How much acreage is there dedicated to open space throughout the entire site? And are we counting those paths, and are we counting private property as part of that? And can you just give us some more information on that, please?
Well, yeah, all of the land, except for the park, is going to be public, you know, public property, you know, so, you know. I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, sorry. Private property, my gosh, wow. Yeah, wow, we just got, no, yeah, so private property, sorry about that. So when you look at the pink areas on the diagram to the left, you know, the ones in the refinement plans that are developed, that's Pringle Creek, the very north, Limburg Green to the east, and then Simpson Hills, you know, the darker one, you know, to the kind of the southern end of Fairview Addition West. When you add up those pink areas, there's 21.88 acres approximately of open space, you know, in that area. Then there's the area that doesn't, in the left diagram, there's the area that doesn't have any, you know, underlying diagram to it, that doesn't have a refinement plan yet. So that, that property at the southern end, very southern end, is going to have to come in for a refinement plan. But, you know, as it stands, without including anything in the woods, and looking at the open areas that have been, that shown in the existing refinement plans that have been approved, you know, there would be 21.88 acres meeting the standard. Now whether or not it's, you know, it is natural, it's treed, and they're passed through it, if the appellant is, if we're to believe that the natural open space can't be used, then that would mean that all the people that are currently, you know, would be concerned about losing it would not be able to go on it anymore, and it would be left in a natural state, which would seem antithetical to what they're, you know, what they'd like to have it as a community benefit, and, you know, so having trails in there, I don't think disqualifies an area as not qualifying as natural open space.
Thank you. Could you comment on the archaeological request?
Yeah, so that condition was established. There was an erratic glacial, erratic boulder that was found, you know, one portion of the property. The Oregon, the state archaeologist and a consultant went out there, there's information in the packet, and they reported about that, identified it. They thought there were archaeological, you know, markings on it, and it was determined that it was not, you know, cultural, it was probably just maybe those, you know, backo teeth that, you know, marked it up. But they still want to have the ability to look at it again when they move it, you know, to make sure that there isn't any unexposed, you know, petroglyphs on another side. But, you know, because of, you know, that presence there, you know, and the potential for archaeological resources on the property, it's just a, it's just a regular, you know, template that we have. It's just an inadvertent discovery plan that Kimberly Fitzgerald and our division has, and it just identifies the process, you know. If you come across something in the process of development, who you need to contact in this, in the steps, stop work, don't do anything else. So there's not any kind of big decision-making process that goes along with it, it's just a standard template that we have that we give to any project that has potential for archaeological resources on the site.
Okay. Counselor Ninkie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to 14 acres versus 40 acres, I thought the point made that you could just come in for an amendment to the original 40 acre, which essentially encompasses this. Would that have been a better option, or how was the developer encouraged to move forward? Or was there?
We didn't, you know, staff didn't, you know, really play any, I think it was more of a decision that the applicant made rather than not, because we had raised, staff had raised the potential to do, you know, an amendment as well. You know, but there was, the applicant made a choice, you know, to go this other route. And again, this isn't the, it's the second one to have a reduction. Pringle Creek, the very first one, had a reduction below. And when you look at it, it's surrounded by the Fairview Addition West, you have the same applicant developing both. They're designed to be integrated, so the criteria for, one of the most important criteria for an adjustment is you have to demonstrate that the standard that's being reduced is equally or better met by the proposed adjustment. So when you have the same developer, you know, developing the property, they're interconnected with the trails and how the open space works, it is essentially serving the function of a, you know, Fairview Addition West plus 14 acre refinement plan, as the refinement plan kind of refers to it, the greater woods area. So it does meet, equally meet that standard, so it's not, we don't view it as a piecemeal approach.
Excellent, thanks. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I was sort of intrigued by the argument, we don't have the slide up there, but it showed the original one that had all the houses, the 16 units, all on the street, and then the lower left-hand side of that was all natural woods. And I think that is kind of the argument that the appellant is making on page five, where they say, "City takes the position that the density is based on the overall maximum number of units, and therefore," but the code treats density and the maximum number of units separately because it's a disjunctive, not a conjunctive. It's or, not and, so could you respond to that argument? Because we have the same number of units now, but the, obviously, the density of where they're.
Yeah, but I wouldn't even say that, you know, the number of units that are shown on that overlay diagram, it's really not, yeah, it's not really, not really important. It's just to say that, hey, there was the intent for some development to occur in this area. In terms of the density, yeah, the Fairview Zone, or the Fairview Plan doesn't have any language in there that says, "Here are going to be the density ranges." All it says is, in various ways, it talks about accommodating up to 1,600 families, and then 18, you know, so there's different numbers of families and units identified in the plan. But the zone says the maximum number of residential units you can have is 2,000. And so that's the zone standard. And then it's the, also the zone that establishes the densities for the MI and the AU, the different sub-areas of the property. And because when we're adopting the code, we have to have clear and objective standards for housing, we couldn't just subject every development through a discretionary approach, would be in violation of state law. We set up a clear and objective path, so you could, you know, take the densities that are identified in the Fairview Mixed Use Zone, which the appellant is indicating have been deviated from by more than 20 percent, and go that route. Or you can, you know, go through the refinement plan process and propose your own densities. And so that is, that is being done with this case. They're proposing their own densities. The lower densities are to try to address the unique characteristics of the site to preserve open space and natural resources. So the lower densities are needed to achieve this other goal for the property.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you. I just have a question, Bryce, about the proposed maintenance for common space, common facilities. So it appears from the applicant that things are wanting to be left in a really natural wildlife sort of state to allow for just the current access that's allowed on this private landscape. But the question from the appellant of the proposed method for perpetual maintenance of common open space and common facilities, just wondering if you could kind of expand on that. I know agreements want someone to purchase property, we talked about the fencing requirements, we talked about the open space and access, but how much would the city be involved in that handoff, and what opportunities would there be once that starts happening for there not be maintenance of those spaces? So even if it was allowed for them to be accessible? Does that make sense?
Sure. Yeah, so in terms of the, well, accessibility and, you know, maintenance?
Yes.
Accessibility would be achieved through easements, easements on, you know, those trails that are open, that are allowed to the public. So, you know, you can't, you know, borrow that, there'll be a public easement on those trail areas. In terms of the maintenance of the common facilities, kind of like plan unit developments, you know, we require an HO, homeowners association, and, you know, every refinement plan we've approved just says, it doesn't get into, the refinement plans don't get into the details of how much money individual homeowners are going to be assessed to maintain the open space, it just, they identify that they're going to be, it's going to be maintained through, you know, the HOA. And then with the subdivision plat, when it is recorded, we will review those HOA documents to ensure it has provisions in there for, you know, assessing, you know, the residence of the unit, just like Fairview Addition West, it's no different. They had the same, they had a requirement to maintain all the common facilities and private, you know, infrastructure. So individual residents are assessed, and that becomes part of the HOA agreement, and it's a, so it's a private requirement. And we look at that at the time of final plat review for the subdivision, and then those CCNRs get recorded against the property.
Thank you.
All righty. Mr. Olson or Mr. Soro, five minutes.
I'm just going to address a couple of issues here. As far as the, you know, it appears, the question of having us increase the refinement plan to include the woods inside of Fairview Addition West, it seems simple enough, but there's ownership differences between Fairview Addition and the existing property, so that's one limitation. But really, the real driver was, we didn't want to somehow encumber Fairview Addition, so we're going to have private streets in this area that are going to be the responsibility of these lot owners. We didn't want to turn around and create this, and they'd be really mad right now if we said, "Okay, we're going to now increase this, and your HOA dues are going to double because we're going to actually increase and have open space and various things that we're going to add to the requirements of the HOA." So it was very intentional not to do that. As far as the streets, I think it's really important, what Bryce pointed out about the master plan, we initially, when we were looking at Fairview Addition West, we initially tried to sort of figure out if the streets worked. The problem was the sheer engineering, I mean, it was master planned from 50,000 feet. When we started looking at it, there was no way we could get the engineering to work. The street grades wouldn't work, it would have been a 20 percent grade going down the street that's shown, going through the woods. It was simply impossible to get the thing to work without, you know, I guess you could move enough dirt to make it work, but it was functionally impossible. So the streets were really not well thought out in terms of master plan, or clearly weren't intended to be where they're shown on the drawings. And I think it's really important to know that, right now, it is not an amenity. It's poison oak, blackberries, and some homeless problems, okay? And we would like it to be something that is an advantage to those that live in our neighborhood, and also those in the greater community, so that we can create an amenity and make it a, really a great place for people to enjoy.
Thank you, Rick. So I think the fundamental disagreement between the applicant and the appellant comes down to the questions about what's required for an amendment of the master plan, and is there a significant change to the resources? And, you know, we think there's no significant change when you compare to the principles, in that there is going to be a significant amount of ecological buffer area retained by this development plan. And when reviewing the existing Fairview Master Plan and putting it in a proper context as to what job was it serving, it's not the refinement plan which operates as the criteria, it was just a general plan, the first concept level, that idea has been discussed at length, that the appellant is essentially arguing for the city to apply a standard that's not been historically what this body has applied in reviewing and approving other Fairview, other Fairview refinement plans, and is inconsistent with the code. So we think that's the fundamental disagreement between the parties and staff's decision, and the planning commission's finding of fact that there is not a significant change as well founded by the evidence in the record. One small issue that was not raised in the written briefing by the appellant was the comment regarding the rock, and, you know, while if you had to comply with something after the land use decision, you can create a problem, that's not really an issue here. That's a condition of approval that requires compliance with state law. There's more than adequate evidence in the record that demonstrates the compliance with the state's archaeological laws and other development permit laws is feasible. So we do meet that standard in this body today. We don't need a second land use decision, it's not an application of local code criterias. And I think that really summarizes our comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
Did you want to speak?
I have some questions.
It's too late, I really am sorry. I apologize. Shoot.
Can I ask you a question?
My proposed public hearing. I really am sorry I didn't get a chance. Yeah, please talk with staff, though, we'll have Bryce answer your questions. Okay, Counselor Ninkie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Council affirms the July 26, 2019 Planning Commission's decision approving the Fairview Refinement Plan as identified in staff recommendation.
Second? Second, Ms. Hoy.
If I may.
You may.
I was involved in this as it emerged, all the original design charrettes and the maps, multiple different versions of it, and I appreciated the thoroughness of staff in their staff report and the findings that were brought forward. The map truly is illustrative. You can actually see variations, even if you look at the wood in a Pringle Creek community area, it's been bisected. We're taking less, or up to 10 percent of the canopy in that area possibly, even less when you actually consider how it can't. possibly even less when you actually consider how a canopy is interwoven. And so I think it still lives up to the original master plan in its written form. Again, this is an illustrative map, and it's actually been proven that we couldn't actually build it as it was theoretically drawn. So I'm happy to make the motion. It's nice to actually see some use, very sparse use. 47,000 square foot lot that only can have a 4,000-foot fenced-in area is an enormous piece of true open space that's not necessarily calculated for the map purposes as well. So, thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Anyone? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, we have no special orders of business. We'll move on to information reports. Counselor Osick.
I'd like to call up 6H.
Okay, you want to make a motion? Counselor Osick moves, we call up for public hearing, item 6H.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Discussion?
Essentially, basically, just to get some answers on the feasibility of having that marijuana plant so close to Sea Tech.
Okay. Very good. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Looking forward to a marijuana interwoven.
We haven't had a good marijuana here.
I'm looking for a second.
Okay, anything else? Anyone want to cover? All right. Anyone signed up to testify? Well, they, no. Okay, we're adjourned.